And today's meeting is a commission special meeting. It's our city manager interview meeting. The date is January eleventh, twenty twenty five. Melanie, would you do a little call for us?
Commissioner DeVito?
Present.
Commissioner Maury?
Present.
Commissioner Maury?
Present.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
HR manager Sheila Walker?
Here.
Finance director Stephen Conklin?
Here.
CR slash assistant city manager Christina Marie?
Here.
Mayor Monders?
I'm here, thank you. Thank you. So we are all together and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Maury to place an indication. Stand if you're ready.
I'll head into the right. Dear heavenly Father, I want to thank you once again for waking us up this morning to a brand new day we never seen before. We ask that you give us guidance and understanding that we will be able to do that blessed with us. We ask that you look over everyone that's here today. Help us to stay in order and do those things that are placed from your sight. We forever pray to you and give you all the honor in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming out in this early hour. This just shows that we can hold meetings at eight thirty in the morning and still have an audience. We'll do a little bit of housekeeping first. George and Jim first, I just want to thank you for your guidance, for working us through this process. I believe we have four very qualified applicants. And it's just been, it's, it, thank you, I just can't thank you enough on behalf of myself and the commission and the city for helping us through this process. And I know that you've got some, we've got some discussion that commissioners as we go forward. This was George's recommendation, I know there was some concern that we weren't gonna have that kind of one-on-one with them possibly, but then this was also going to allow, allows everyone a little bit more ease. So we did set the table up if the commissioners would like, you can all go down there and sit with them more N and A, more personable setting. I'm gonna leave that up to the commission.
My best, I have just a comment and suggestion. And also, thank you very much to George and Jim. You really brought us to a great point. And is my mic on? Okay, because I don't feel, like I said last night, or night before last, I don't feel very close to it. I, to me, this seems a little small. This is the one interview we have. I am set up to take notes since we have very compressed time schedule. I understand we want to make things comfortable for the applicant, but we also want to be mic'd and everybody else could hear. If the city attorney is not going to be present, could we not invite the applicant to sit on the end? And then we would have a nice roundtable format and we could all have our workspace. One concern I have is, this is so close, the applicant could see us taking notes.
And that's fine, and that's fine, that was, we set it up either way, that was George's recommendation last night. So we have it available if that's what they want. So it's the pleasure of the commission, quite honestly. So it's what the commission, I'm fine with having the applicant sit there. It probably makes it a little easier since we are live and want it recorded. So it would make it a little easier. It was just, it was an option and I knew this morning that we would have some discussion over it and we could determine that as someone. So we just wanted to be prepared and not have to pull it all together last minute. Right, so commissioners, how do you feel about this?
You do what is fine with me. Just okay. But if the mics are important, so they can hear.
Okay, then we'll, then if everybody, then we'll decide that. If we have anything else, Commissioner DeVito, before we turn it over to George and Jim.
Just wrote down a couple of notes and, as you know, just, I've been here now for six years and we've done a couple of city manager interviews of the process. Because we have such a short timeframe, I'm just throwing this out for us to consider. Maybe when we, we're, we're going to rotate and get to each asked questions, it might be more fair and work better if we ask our question and get the answer and then we don't follow up until the five o'clock at the end. Because that could eat up a lot of time.
Okay, you are very concerned about the time. We've made it very clear to the applicants that time, they, that we're gonna take as much time as we need. And so commissioners, I want you all, you've said this multiple times now, but I want everybody to know as commissioners, that we'll take as much time as we feel we need. Some might just take thirty minutes, some might take an hour, it just depends as we go through. My recommendation is that, and that we go through and just like we've done kind of in the past, one person asks a question, the next commissioner asks a question, and, and we keep it flowing that way. So that we don't engage them personally that way.
That was what I was really talking about, that we just, as you said, keep it flowing.
Yes.
Because certainly they're interesting people and there's a tendency to wanna, and I, I'm the one who would do that, so.
Yes, we know.
I wanted to talk. And then are we, before we get started, are we going to have a, a report on the background checks?
Sheila, I was gonna ask Sheila to, Sheila, do you want to come forward and, and?
The police, we submitted all of the information. We submitted the information to the sheriff department. They run the background check and what they do, they just confirm if it's good or if they found something. As far as a report, they do not send us a report. They do not share that with us.
And how was this background check so far? How did they, you received all of them back, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we have. We received all four of them back. Three, all four came back good. There was one that they kind of looked up and said that if we wanted to do a public background check, we can.
And you have requested that, correct?
I did request that. And I, we have not received that back. The, the city that we request that from, to give a public record request, we would have to have a release signed by that person that we want to do that background check. And as well, the, the person that pulls those background checks, she was out of the office until the fourteenth. And so we still would be delayed on getting that report back.
Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am. May we know who that person is, who is, was recommended to have the further background check?
George, Jim?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to know. And I, good, and I, and I did a little further research also, so.
And Andrew Wilson, is that?
Lilson, yes. Lilson. Seems as if there was at some point back in twenty-two, there was just a, an issue that, that he had possibly with some alcohol.
Yeah.
And, but that was the only thing that he did.
That was the only thing.
And it was not, my understanding, it was not driving, it was just, yes. And so that, that did come, that hasn't come back, but that was something that did, that did arise. And we don't know the specifics until Sheila gets that back. And of course, they can't release that to, to us.
Correct. So that's outstanding and that would have a sign of.
And we would make sure, yeah, and we make sure that.
We did that.
That he is the one that's offered that, that, that we have to make sure that.
Yes, ma'am.
It comes back and it's acceptable. I was told that was he not something that somebody was probably looking at hiring for? Might have been one-time occurrence. But, but that's what, that's what we have. The other ones did come back, please.
Yes, ma'am, they all came back.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
No, I do not. I'm good.
Um, my guys. I knew.
Sorry about that, well, no bad. Well, let's see, George and Jim were going to speak to us, so I'm gonna hold my questions and then address what.
And again, like I said, I know that, that you have, you have shared your concern about the timeframe. It was just, let's get it on the schedule. You know, and this way we didn't have an hour block and then we're sitting there because, you know, twiddling our thumbs, so. But they were, they have been very, they have been instructed that they might have to sit there for a while. We have donuts and coffee and orange juice for them in the next room. I know just a moment ago, we had all three, so they were here to be able to see all the action out there. That was known.
We've got a little bottle of water.
And I didn't check everyone's cup when they came through. Right now, my smeller's not, my smeller is not right, so I wouldn't help anyway. And then I'm gonna turn this over to George and Jim, George and Jim show. And kind of if you would just give us kind of a lay of the land, what's your, what's your, your direction for us and?
Well, just, I just, everyone's gotta copy the questions, everybody's gotta copy the qualifications, which is what we're looking for. So as you go, as you, as you take a look at each candidate, you might wanna just check or write yourself little bullet points on, you know, whether, whether you believe that they can lead this, lead this city forward. And everyone, I understand, also has a copy of the resumes. My suggestion is that before you call somebody, they just take a couple of minutes to review the resume and then they'll come in, they'll answer your questions. I think there should be, there's a good option to have a sit up there, I think that's much better. Down here, it's more like a senate hearing than an, than an in-person process. And so I think that is much more comfortable for the candidates, so thank you for that. And just a key part of this, remember, is at the very end, we're gonna give them fifteen minutes to ask questions about the city. We should be able to learn a lot about them from the questions they ask or don't ask about the city. So that, that, that's really it. Jim and I'll be here to maybe help if needed to keep the, keep the candidates entertained or at least, you know, go out there from time to time, check. If you don't mind, I may sit at that table from time to time, just so I can take better notes from there. And that's about it, I really don't have much, I think we're ready to go. Let's hope you can find somebody who can do a whole, enjoy the city, not stay here and, and do a good job.
I think that's the key, that they'll wanna stay here, thank you. Yesterday, I will say to this commissioners, and I do apologize, it was very short notice, but I, I ended up with a tour. And it kind of, I was planning on being here to, to do the setup for the reception and then kind of at the last minute, decided that I probably don't want it. Christina Marie was on it and Michael Brillhart was also on the tour. Thanking Pastor Shoal, he took everybody in the church class.
Did he drive?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, it was, it was actually, it was actually a cool thing and it's something that we're probably going to start up very quickly. I feel that it could be a little money, money earner for the city. And so all of us are gonna take turns being the tour guides. Will give us all our little jackets and our hats. But it was, but with that said, I feel like, and, and George and Jim were also on that tour. I feel like they got a very good overview of, of the, the city. We took them to the wastewater plants, showed them that, we took them to the water tapards, we took them to the cemetery. We took them out to where the new school is being built. So just letting you know that as you go through these questions with them, that they, they saw the middle, middle school, gave them a good understanding about that, closing maybe to the high school. And kind of the history, we took them back, Molly Morris's house, the Hubbard House, showed them that, showed them Lake Street, showed them those, you know, our parks. And it was a very, it was, showed them the peacocks and they actually gave us a show, just like our sheriff's department just gave us a show, the peacock stopped, stopped the van and two of our really pretty ones pranced across the, the street. As Pastor Shoal said, I'm glad they were on your side and not my side. They were on your side and not my side. So it was, I felt like it was a good, they also had an opportunity to meet all of our directors yesterday afternoon and Captain Messary, and except for Keith. Keith had to go home milk yesterday afternoon. And so that kind of, everything kind of got a wrench and so that's when I kind of jumped in. But, but it was, they have, they do have a pretty good overview of, of, of the city. So just so everybody knows that, I just wanted to disclose that, that that kind of came out last minute. And with that, I guess, are we ready? That's been, George and Jim.
I just want to mention, when we were triaging the resumes in prior meetings, I made a little grid. And I didn't know if anybody wants one.
That would be, yeah, that would be good.
I'll just count it out.
Thank you for doing that. We talked about, we talked about that last night with George a little bit and we're not doing great. So some, but just kind of.
Thank you.
I gotta make sure my desk has any reading in it.
Did I give them that? And I have, I have more, should I make a copy or whatever as the day goes on? I have got a couple copies, so that was it.
Okay, so I think if everybody's good with the process, we'll go through. We do have our HR. Sheila is here and so Sheila, if you do, and George and Jim, please keep us in check. You know, everyone, please remember, there are certain questions that, that we, you know, we cannot ask. And so everybody, keep that, keep that in check and I ask that you keep us in check as well. With that, are we ready to call in Mr. Brown?
Can we get?
I'm sorry.
Anybody else have anything else to say before we do that? Are they good? And here we go. Oh, I do want to say this. I want to thank Melanie and Karen, they stepped in yesterday and they did a fabulous job. Thank you very much, Melanie, and thank you, you've done an outstanding job and you've, you kind of were burnt into the fire. And yesterday, we really were, and it was a beautiful spread last night, it was. And, and we got plenty for lunch today. Anybody concerned, we got plenty for lunch today, but it really was, and so thank you all, did just a beautiful job last night. Made us proud. Thank you. Right, right, you're on the end, yes. Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Good morning.
I hope last night went, you found your hotel and everything was.
I survived, yes.
You survived. I'm gonna ask you before we, before we begin with any of our questions, I know you did it last night, but I'm gonna ask you again for your three-minute elevator speech again for anybody that was not there. And just kind of a little bit, tell us a little bit about you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Carl Brown, grew up in Delaware area of DC, went to high school there, then cut out to LA for college. Ended up staying out there to push an acting career for until twenty-eleven. Decided to change horses at that point and went and got my masters in public administration in East DC. Johnson City, Tennessee, did an internship there for the city manager, mainly using RTI S to identify, basically, we're missing out on property taxes. And also worked with budget planners, that was my beginning with my public finance indoctrination. My mind was in urban planning, so I thought I was gonna be a planner. And it's like I got hired by State of Mexico Department of Homeland Security to do grants and budget and finance for them. And I really wanted to be in Florida. So City of Tampa took me on as the police and fire department budget grants, CIP analysts. So I helped them with all their money resolutions. They needed vehicles, H-tracking, moved money after them, got real close with my police and fire chief. So that's kind of the most part of my job that I really liked doing was the customer service for my departments. Went on from there to Alexandria, Virginia as a financial reporting analyst. Was dealing more with like bonds and non-general fund, where Sam was really, was, I was general fund a lot as long as CIP. Alexandria, I was bonds, CIP, special revenue grants, all, all sorts of non-general fund stuff. Really wanted to get back to Florida, so Jacksonville Transportation Authority took a gamble on me and I think it's worked out, I reconnected with the capital program and that grants manager. And have now been loading and dealing with basically their grants. So their super grants, which is capital programming. So we do a, we go, going out to like twenty twenty-nine, so we're getting like right now, we have the, the statistics team are pulling out solutions from the different project managers. So we got a bunch of different departments, I don't know, like eight. So I did work with all the directors on that to see what projects they can do. It's like a software implementation, they might try to write that into the grant for whatever, three million for this year, next year, what is, what's realistic. And that's the other thing, I think we're, we're doing a better job of is bringing together, because a lot of times people weren't talking. So bringing the, the directors and the project managers together to coordinate better with us more communication to see what we can get them and what's realistic. So it's not sitting out there, oh, we have to go back to MTA and say, we're not gonna use it this year, we gotta push it back. So not to get, sorry to get into the nitty-gritty, but that's literally like what I'm doing right now.
Thank you. Thank you. And commissioners, I just want to remind you that any notes you take and anything that you write down is subject to public, it is public record. So just be aware of that as you take the minutes. I'm gonna go ahead, it's okay, we're gonna start our questions. I'll start down on this end with Commissioner DeVito.
Great, good morning, Ms. Brown. Have you had the opportunity to review our city charter and ordinances at all?
The charter and ordinances, no, I took obviously a look at what was sent to me, the budget, the board chart and the strategic plan going forward over the next few days.
Okay, that, that's fine, we can go on to the next, yeah.
Good morning, how are you doing? Well, thanks for, thanks for being here. Why are you, why are you interested in becoming a city manager or a city manager for this city?
I think it began in twenty thirteen when, six months I was working with the city manager, assistant city manager, budget director and planning director at the City of Johnson City during management. And that's where I realized, I, I don't know if I really wanna be a planner, maybe it's great, but city management really, like when I'm sitting down with the budget meetings, with all the departments, with the city manager and you just see all the back and forth, and I was like, this really seems more like where you can make a difference. And I don't wanna say more exciting, but more responsibility, more challenges. So that kind of started it, so ever since then, that's really where the main goal was to be. So no, I don't have any previous city manager experience, but the goal was always to get that position. And then I found this and it was in Florida, because I'm not big in Florida. So many times a city manager position pops up in Florida. Like I interviewed for the city manager at the City of Madera Beach three years ago, so I threw my hat in the ring.
And how do you, I'm gonna go with this, because this is important, as you know, because you have five. In this, in this community, you have five, sometimes you have more, sometimes you have less. But how do you do the relationship between the city manager and your city commission?
I'm, you, as the city manager role as I perceive it, is very much a public servant that's accountable to all the council members. When I dealt with council members, you were sometimes, oftentimes, very different objectives, visions and goals. And so that would be the responsibility of the city manager to balance those goals, communicate effectively by guidance and experience where the city manager would have it or his point of view going forward. And that's where I think a lot of creativity and foresight comes in as to what can or can't be done. And then obviously the commission will be like, well, we, they can be pretty good guidance, but this is where we're gonna go. Can you implement the plan efficiently and productively? And that's where the city manager would have to take charge of all orders.
Okay, good morning once again. My question to you today, so your tour of the city and your city documents, what do you view as the most important needs of our city?
We don't need answers.
No, I, I enjoyed the tour yesterday and I think, and a lot of concerns, it's frustrating dealing with constituents last night about the need and importance of, okay, so we ran next this land, but now it's like, and it's kind of like back to my planning studies whatever, ten years ago, especially the European stuff, it's like the envelope development. So if we're putting in, we're bringing new businesses on, mixed-use development, that's all cool. But again, kind of, kind of like you were doing through CRA with the buildings around here, it's like maximizing the current infrastructure. I understand that the point was made that sometimes we have the buildings that are old and it's absentee landlords and we can't. So that's, but that's a problem. But it would be maximizing the amount of space and kind of building in to out. What was one of the planning things I read a long time ago, broken windows, I'm sure probably everybody's read it. It was a big planning thing, it's like, once you get one broken window, you're gonna get more, so it's minimize that as we try to build a stronger, safer community going out. I know some people want more growth, like I mean, I see, see these lakes and I'm like, wow, that could really make for great ecotourism. I was talking with a gentleman last night and it's like, how do you do that sustainably? How do you, because that's, I mean, I mean, we do need wider materials, what type of infrastructure do we put in to handle? All these tourists coming in, what's the objective there? Is it just to get more fee money for those tourists, to make it just more enjoyable for the community? Because then you run into the community members, they're like, what are you just, you're just using our city to gain money? And then our quality of life goes down and then the tourists come from where? Daytona, because even my brother's working out, but he's hardware, his manager was like, oh, that, that Crescent City's really, really cool. It's gorgeous and we got these great lakes. And I was like, what? And, but they know about it, so the tourists know about it, so infrastructure there is expanded and that would be a discussion. People would come, but at what cost to the community? So a balancing act there.
Thank you, thank you. Please, your buddy. I'm taking a tour of the city and I believe that you probably saw the diversity in the city, throughout the city. Okay, different neighborhoods, different people. And I think that that diversity is reflected within our commission, if you look across who we are as a commission. And one thing I noticed is you seem to have less management experience. You have management experience, but, but when it, when it comes to managing people that need to get along and, and it's been said that to manage a commission is like her being cast. And so I just want you to give us a time in your management experience, how you kind of negotiated a group of people to come together and bring them to where they need to be, if you understand what you mean, bring them to what you consider as you would be the city manager, the correct direction to go in. All of us, we gather, by the way.
Sure, on, on one of my team, I currently supervise four and that's, they're all very diverse. And then we have a one team, because fortunately they came on actively, so I can hold and build them regardless of their race, sexual orientation, we all function as a very efficient unit and care for each other, put our trust in each other. We have different opinions and how it needs to be done, we're always very cordial and respectful because I think I set that boundary there to begin with, in terms of needing to work together. Specific example of, of what, what recent problem, it's still an ongoing problem. Back to Build Bay Streets of Jacksonville, we've got this Build Bay Streets autonomous vehicle system. It's been going on, I believe, since two thousand is when this, before the CEO wanted to start going. So we already have some of these vehicles and they're totally autonomous, they, they hold about eight. And so I'm the grants person for this. So what the JTA is trying to do is they're trying to put in this corridor that runs a way down to the football stadium and then back and has these autonomous vehicles, which literally run by themselves, stop, sense cars, they have all these crazy sensors on, they're millions of dollars. But in the, in the, so how do we fund that? Well, not to get too boring, but we got twelve million from the Fed, six million, seven million, two-state grants. Twelve million, I imagine, almost fifty or something, I should go off the top of my head. And then we got like twenty-five million pure local. Okay, so, and back to what we were talking about, it's never as easy as you think it is. So, so now they're like, well, how do we build? Because this thing was set up improperly five years ago. So they're like, well, Carl, how are we going to? Because what we need to do is build the state properly, the correct percentages that's going from doing that. And we also have to build the Fed the proper percentages, the only key building. But the way it was set up was messed up. So we had to pull in, I had to give it with the controller, special projects manager, the actual Angie, the actual director of this Build Bay corridor to figure out, because the needs have changed over forty years, five years, because this takes so long. So now she needs all these millions of dollars moved around. So guess who gets to go move those millions of dollars around now doing that? You, you were going to have to ask for a budget amendment to MTA, so now we're going to have to coordinate with MTA. I got to coordinate with that, the director of it, the special ordinance manager to figure out the roadmap, the controller to make sure it's all legal. F dot to C, if we have the current percentages. So the IT to make sure IT is getting everything they need. So that's the director. So room, director transit ops to make sure he's still getting everything he needs. So it's pulling in all these stakeholders, which I, I'm not sure how many I deal with at this point. Probably eight, to get everybody on the same page in order to bill out to the vendors properly, the proper percentages to be in compliance with that dot MTA rules. But also to get each department what they need as part of this bigger project. Because everybody's involved in this project. So it's not just like I go to Angie or something and, and, and what we have. Not a problem with, but it's kind of siloing or it's like, I'm just responsible for my bid. And I'm like, that's can't, that can't be how we look at it. So it's going to be a little slow. It's going to challenge. Again, they already, maybe they are directors, but they definitely work with me because we know we need to get it done. Unless the CEO is like, this is priority number one in the meeting, then it makes my job a little easier. Getting traction with the nitty gritty that I need, the number of fad. So that's certainly what I'm looking.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeMito.
So on the tour yesterday, you observed, I think you were taken to the water plant. You know, we, the city has water, sewer and gas utilities. Do you have any experience with an organization that runs its own utilities? And how would you feel about being responsible for managing the people in charge of those utilities?
There will be a learning curve. I mean, I love figuring out new things and, and made with that tour. But that would be a, I mean, Tampa obviously did, Alexandria did, like massive, massive. But I was not involved in any of those bonds or grants that, in order to get those bonds and grants, I was not involved in that as, or managing the infrastructure. Alexandria had to replace a lot because their sewer and their, it was such a great system of emergency. I was not involved with those departments. But, so I've been with those cities. I have not been directly involved with managing everything you talked about.
So just, you know, you probably read in the news, when storms come, it's important to keep the sewer system operating. There are a lot of nitty-gritty challenges. Do you feel prepared to undertake that kind of challenge?
I mean, I'm gauging for my question. There's an infrastructure problem and a lot of.
None of them, none of them.
It works.
Then what she was just saying is during the storms, it's most important that we keep our water, that the water does not shut off and that the sewer system continues to work. More importantly, the water doesn't so that we can continue to provide safety and water for the community.
That's correct.
Well, actually, I was more thinking of the sewer system because, actually, in some of the past storms in southwest Florida and the Tampa area, people's houses were not destroyed by flooding. They were destroyed by sewer backups. The systems fail and we have never had anything like that here. We did a lot better. But I'm just saying, those are very significant responsibilities of the city. And I just want to make sure that you would be comfortable having that under your area of responsibility. Yeah, we, we've done well.
Yeah, we have lift stations. So we have multiple lift stations around town. Power grid goes down like it happened in this last storm. And so some of them are on, they have to keep them pumped. And so we have a crew that has to be out there keeping those pumped and making sure that the generators, that it does have a generator, if it doesn't, they have to go to an individual and keep them pumped as they can.
So not to get into it now, but do we need more backup generators, like other strategic? Because that's kind of what we had to do in Tampa and, and what we're doing right now with proper generator. As backup generators, it sometimes that can take a minute to get, because I know COVID blew us back for like a year. And my wife is thinking a year supply chain. So, but not to get into that. But yes, I'd be comfortable learning how to handle that.
Right, thank you.
My turn?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, before I finish off the list, do you have any experience with CRAs or managing Main Street? Or do you live in a Main Street group?
Not, not managing it. I was looking at what we're doing with the build and also our Mr. Board of CEOs plan for kind of the surrounding area. Because right now we just put in this massive building we're at, this new building, San Olivia. But all around it's going to be mixed-use development. So I'm, maybe on a bigger scale, not as quaint or pretty as from what I was seeing with your strategic plan. But it looks like the CRA is directly involved in helping facilitate this plan. So yes, I know about it. I know what it does and it was mixed-use. How I implement it before SPOC. But it seems like you have your resident expert over here, so.
And, and you do have really nice new digs. I was able to walk around those last month.
What?
Yeah, and I walked around those. And so yes, they are very nice. Your, your new office is.
It's pretty.
It's, it's, it is, it is. So, so knowing that, how do you feel about coming to Crescent City? I mean, what is your first, what's bringing you to Crescent City?
You would mainly be the position and the challenges be very, very different than what I currently do. And it would, it would basically get me to the goal of being a city manager. I love capital programming, grants program, they're all great relationships with my team and all the directors and AUPs and SVPs. That being said, sometimes it's time to like branch out, take up like, just like the weaknesses that I've been pointing out. I haven't run sewer, you know, no rurting. I haven't done certain things. So those would be due, like there are some challenges. And I think I can, I think it gets up pretty quick. But it would be that, that type of transition to something.
Okay. So ultimately your goal is to go into the common city, a city manager.
Oh, yeah.
Can you tell me just a little bit about your most successful experience in recruiting new businesses?
Recruiting new businesses?
Yes.
In, uh, you know, some economic development. I know that would be a very exciting thing. So no, I, I didn't know that my positions have I recruited. Have I been around the economic development team jobs at the U of M?
Are you willing to do, you think, do you want to revise it?
No, I guess not. Yeah, okay. I'll take what you're saying. So I, I know that you're new at this. I was thinking that maybe we had a way of recruiting, looking for. But that's, that's okay with your answer. But can I ask you another question maybe?
Sure.
So what are you looking for in your next job?
A lot of the things we so far stated here, the challenges that I haven't taken on as SPOC yet, such as the sewer, but then also the things that I could handle, which I think would be, would be beneficial.
Okay. Commissioner Burton. I have no questions. No more questions, thanks.
One question. Commissioner DeMito.
I, I do. And just to clarify, you said you have a planning degree or?
Well, actually, yeah, I've got a master's in public administration, urban planning concentration.
Okay, urban planning concentration. I thought of the planning there somewhere. And my question actually is, if we offered you the position, how soon could you see yourself being able to come forward, assuming that that round-trip, that all that go okay? Do you have the timeline in your mind?
I would, I've been with my boss for over four years, so definitely two weeks notice. And that and that, probably another week to relocate. I mean, I'm only an hour and a half north, but again, not, at even after the tour, I'm not totally familiar with this area. Like where, where would I live down here? So that would take me a minute. I usually do it pretty fast if you see a dumpster around.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you very much. You're good. The only thing, the only question I, I probably have is that, and this is one of those unknowns, but through your experience, when we were talking, when we were talking about maybe depressing, kind of depressing city. And of course, you toured the, you took a tour of this building, you took a tour of the AMX. I, I've been in situations, we've probably all been in situations where we had really state-of-the-art environment. And, and then we've come to an area where, I mean, we've moved into a building, the promotion moved into a building that it wasn't such. Probably my, my, my question would be, we would, you know, we would hope that as we go through this hiring process, we've, we can find somebody that would be here and would, would plan to be here for a little while. Do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, is that, I know with your, with your goals, this is also a great opportunity here in Crescent City because in a small community, as a city manager, you wear many hats. So you learn a lot. But I guess my question would be, in looking at us today, I mean, your long-range goal, where do you see you, where would you see yourself should you be offered this job? As far as how would you be comfortable in a small community, knowing that you're coming from a larger community?
I mean, yeah, LA, DC, when I was younger, I'm forty-eight now, I'm going on forty-nine, ready to, to take a step back in terms of, I, I don't, I don't really need a bigger community, I should put it that way. So coming here, the objective would really be to, and it's not just staying from the strategic goals and the issues or the obstacles facing it, really the, what the objective would be, working with everybody to get those things accomplished. I think that's where, that's what brings me joy. If my job is where there's a problem, can't find any money, whatever, okay, gotta do this. So we can do this. I can work here. So kind of accomplishing those things is what you kind of need. And I know I might start over again the next day. But like, that, that kind of is the, the thing that brings me joy. So I'll be on the community. So how long, as long as it takes, are there always going to be new challenges? Sure. So am I looking to move? Like I know the last city manager moved on for a bigger community. Am I at that point? Am I looking to that? But like, no.
And he did make a two, I mean, and typically I think that's part of your living with the city manager. They do ask, is that a correction? More of a two-year commitment to something that is part of the training?
It's considered the ICMA under ethical standards, a minimum time to be effective. So any manager that jumps jobs more than every two years might be considered for some action.
But I come from, from cities, Kingsport, city manager was there twenty-five, thirty years. Johnson City, thirty years previously as a city manager. So kind of used to, city managers get in there, maybe it takes them like a year, two years to learn. And then you can really start, even my current position, am I, can I work a lot harder now than I did in Europe? Yeah. So just much more, like you're saying, you wear a lot of hats, you learn by failing. But then if you, you're fast enough to learn and hand out improv.
Commissioner Burton, do you have any other questions? Commissioner DeMito.
I have one more question and it just has to do with, this would be your first stint as a city manager, although you worked in government. As you know, Ford has very particular laws about open government. Lot of very particular laws that deal with city administration. How comfortable are you becoming pretty much an expert on those? Because we, our attorney is not on staff. Our attorney is on contract.
I feel that, as you probably know, with a lot of the federal and state grants, there's a lot of lawyer jargon, the resolutions, the DTAs that you have to read through. And if you don't comprehend it, you better learn how to operate it. So I feel very comfortable in picking that up quickly as needed.
Thank you, thank you. There's no other question, no other question. So, Commissioner Brown, this is your opportunity to interview us. So do you have, is there any questions you have a lot?
Just that, actually, that one thing, which was interesting to me because I'd always liked to be without power. And we were saying, the town or a lot of towns without power. We got last thing I heard, Kate and Lee.
No, no.
No, no.
No.
Or, yeah, sure, no. Like for, and I just know especially even me, I don't want to be without AC with them, I think about kids and elderly. And it's like, how would we need, is there any way around that, I guess? Or is the city looking to, is that more backup generators? Or how is that, even is mitigating such a active nature even possible? So, no.
Not really. The city, now the city has a generator. So the city was on, we, so we were powered here. I believe some of those necessary, like the nursing home, you know, those that needed the school, the elementary school we went by yesterday and the new elementary school. So that was a shelter for those people that didn't have it. That hit, that's, you know, that's with anybody, any community. FPL was on here immediately. We had covered up with FPL. Some people got it back. And with Commissioner DeMito, you got yours back within the next little day. The first day you got it. I didn't get, I was one of the last ones. I didn't get it until Sunday evening. We were in the middle. And so, you know, and, and I remember it was, that came in on a Wednesday, Friday. Friday, Friday morning, we were all down because they had to take everything down. Yeah, all the feeder lines were down. And Friday afternoon, I was driving my golf cart down here towards Three Bananas. And, but I think you were down, you were down there and everybody was dark. It wasn't dark yet, but everybody was out and all of a sudden the lights started coming on. And I saw the lights coming on and everybody was outside cheering. And so it's just, you know, the active nature, it's just an active nature. And so, but I do believe that some of those areas that needed it, Commissioner, do you agree that they were adequately supplied? I know the sheriff's office and the school district brought down large generators also.
I mean, that's to answer his question fully. That is a Ford problem. You know, there's just a couple of things. I mean, it's a, it's a Ford problem. The only thing you can really do is to try to bury your power lines and that is extremely expensive. Even I lived in Tampa in a much wealthier community and they did not have the capacity even to bury the power lines. And then if there's water intrusion, it can be worse. That's what happened to Puerto Rico just now. So I think that's more, as the mayor described, how to cope. Because all of our power companies, you know, are getting more and more used to this. I mean, as the storms become more, apparently more frequent. But yeah, coping is a good thing to put our. more frequent, um, but yeah, coping is a, a good thing to prioritize too, and, and go.
We've got large trees here, so we have a lot of branches, we have a lot of debris down, um, and that's the first thing, and the biggest question there is getting that debris off the road, and without, for the safety of people, knowing that there's no lines in there, there's no live lines, um, but like Commissioner De Gea said, all of our infrastructure, all of our wiring is, you know, in the air, I was in a beach community in the Panhandle, it was all buried, and seldom ever during storms did we ever, I think I lost power one time, um, so it does make a huge difference. Do you have any other questions?
Just one more, if we have time, no?
Yeah.
And I think two in the week, spoke with your, kind of downtown reinvestment act, the CRAs, trying to rebuild the community, finding out, is looking over the budget, I know the general fund can't handle all of that, probably some of the, all the different phases going forward, um, who, and I know we might have a question on this the other day, just about what grants are available to help small towns like this, I know we got the two contracted out, grants people, I, I obviously haven't met them, um, like what, what, what's available from that, uh, HWA, FJ in terms of infrastructure grants, this meeting, some, some of the grants I get handling construction, like roadway, um, construction, intersection, construction, um, what type of grants, would, would, um, would that be something to be going after, and also, I don't know if the city is bond rated, is, is that a CFO question, I just, but I did, you know, saw how much the bonds helped, say Alexandria, because they were using straight cash, I was like, you guys have these old bonds, and you can save all this cash, let's use these bonds, and they just didn't, you know, this is all the turnover, so you just read the ordinance, and you're like, IT, here's a mil, here's a mil for you guys, there's just nobody new, but I made that, I just don't know how that works with, with a town this size, I don't, I mean, I'm talking out of term.
You're not out of terms, question, Commissioner, do you have?
I have a response to that, so, we have a very small staff, and there are grants that we have traditionally applied for, with a, one, uh, grant writer who works with us in particular, who, uh, mainly goes out for grants where he can be paid from the administration fund.
Sure.
Um, we have had many discussions over the past several years, and I have a hat in my bag, I almost got it out to give to you, um, that would be something that would fall under to me, uh, traditionally, the city managers have to help us with, um, from my perspective, the short answer is, um, we have the grants that we traditionally go out for, uh, it's very narrow, because the grant writer can be paid, and it's, uh, infrastructure, things we need, there probably aren't other grants out there, not a lot, nobody pays for your operations, it's, you know, infrastructure, um, but that, that is something, um, to be researched and to be determined, that we are just now starting to, um, delve into, Burton, and other commissioners may have other thoughts of that.
Commissioners, do you have anything else that you want to add?
No.
Um, one of the things, one of the pickups that we have had, you know, I don't know if you saw this in the, but, but we do, like, um, like a lot of smaller communities, we have in our reserve budget, um, we have a million dollars that we keep in our reserve, and that has been, um, we've been criticized, not criticized, but, um, from like, yeah, we've been criticized by some of our federal agencies, and that, you know, you got that money, why, using that money, um, for, you know, because we're going after more dollars, and, um, so that kind of is something that, that we, we've been working around a little bit, just to kind of, yeah, um, answer that, but grants are, you know, and that's why, as famously, you know, Commissioner De Gea has been after us, you know, to do something with grants, do something with grants, again, it's the city manager, he only has so much time.
Sure, sure.
So we just, um, hired an additional grant, um, writing company to assist us, um, to help try to find some more grants, um, and so, that's a, a very new thing, and hopefully we can focus on that as we get forward.
So we actually, we aren't technically paying them.
No, we're not, and I, and we covered that, I, you know, yesterday, we're not paying, you know, it's, it's, um, on an AS, on an ASG.
Okay, I just don't want it to think you have no money to pay.
I think that was a question too, you came up there today.
Yeah.
Um, do you have any other, is there any other questions? You good?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thank you all, thank you, it was nice to meet a lot of you.
Thank you for coming to Crescent City, an interesting Crescent City, I'm gonna let, um, George and Jim and y'all know, and just for everybody to know, okay, he's going to, we, Crescent City is going to be on, um, Crescent City is going to be on the radar because, you know, we were on the Today Show, I don't know if any of y'all know that, we were on the Today Show. Yes. Yeah, I was there, and, and they said, and I, and I said, and from Crescent City, Florida, Christina saw that, didn't she, Christine?
I turned back on my cell phone, we're sending you pictures on TV.
Yeah, I was right up there, and Crescent City, Florida, so, just be ready, that was my bucket list, yes, Mitchell, right.
Do we not get to ask questions today of the candidates?
No. That was last night. I'm gonna get a, a warm up of coffee, we'll take a, just a, a slight, um, recess, get ready for your next applicant.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for joining us in Crescent City. I knew you got in here Thursday evening. We're glad we could bring a little warm weather for you.
Very grateful.
What is it like where you are now?
Eight inches of snow with that cold air this week, so.
Oh, wow.
It's supposed to warm up a little bit tomorrow, so hopefully we can get rid of some of that.
Okay, well, we asked you last evening, and I'm gonna ask you again if that's okay. Just kind of give us your three-minute elevator speech about yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Hi, my name's Drew Wilson. I was born and raised in Columbus, Ohio, and moved around with my mom and stepfather. After that, Columbia, Missouri, Fort Rock, Alabama, West Hartford, Connecticut. And then we settled in Southern Virginia, right in a city right off of Interstate 95, called Inford. So if you go up in every fast food restaurant, you know the man. It's our hometown, know our notorious speed trap. But sometimes there are five thousand people completely suffering these around their county. Unlike you all, they didn't have any shared services. But to get right into why I'm interested in being your city manager is my friend's teacher was married to our city manager in my hometown and got to know him better than I got to know her. They loved everything about his job. He knew everybody, everything that was going on, always had an idea, and always was prepared to make good recommendations to the councilman and his plan of good will. And it just seemed like a fantastic profession. So I went off to college, went to university, married, went to graduate school in Ohio, so I'm in public administration, and promptly landed at the Office of Spaceflight at NASA, which is about as far away from this as you can get. I was accepted into the old Presidential Management Insulin Program. Started at NASA, spent some years at the Environmental Protection Agency, working on one of the market-based solution programs, using the market to try and drive environmental outcome. Don't hear much about acid rain anymore, so I think probably did a okay job. Then took a fellowship on Capitol Hill, ended up where my agency paid me to work for a period of time on Capitol Hill, so a mutually beneficial relationship between the legislative branch and the executive branch. Ended up going to work for a guy I barely heard of in the state at all, but not once. Name's Eric Reid. His career went a lot of places in Aspen Mine. So I worked on infrastructure and environmental issues the first couple of years I worked for him, then he moved me to the Appropriations Committee, where I wrote the funding bill, drafted a funding bill for the Department of Energy, Bureau of Reclamation, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and a bunch of smaller ones for seven years. That when the Appropriations Committee was fully out partisan legs, and produced legislation every year, which we're all proud of, it doesn't work that way anymore. So we'll get into a little bit of that reasoning, I'm sure, as we go along. When Senator Reid became the majority leader, he appointed me Deputy Sergeant-at-Arms, which I did for a number of years, and then became Sergeant-at-Arms. Sergeant-at-Arms office is the entire non-legislative back-to-the-House operation in the Senate. In addition, it's safeguarding and security of members and staff. It's everything you need to keep a big, large organization like that going, including services that are completely comparable to the ones that are offered in a municipality, everything from human resources to IT to public safety to buildings and grounds to, we ran the members gym and the staff gym, all the way down to department enforcement. And then when Senator Reid retired, I went to a head law firm that led to named partner and done that ever since, took over as managing partner, leasing years when my pre, when the other named partner passed away. A lot of sort of what you would think of as DC, a lot of regulatory work, a lot of communications work, some lobbying, and grant making, and trying to seek federal resources for nonprofits, some local governments, and then had a series of clients that were great clients, and some of them were. So being an actor, you take one for the money, one for the love, so a lot of conservation-related clients. So lived in Silver Spring for another part of a decade now. Thing I told most of us last night, I've been married this month. I can't say I have three dogs, three cats. I picked up a lot of greed somewhere along the way. Trying to think what I'm missing.
Exactly.
We'll get to it, for sure.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get to it. Thank you, that was a great interview, and we appreciate that. I'm gonna start, this time I'm gonna start on this end. So Commissioner Burton, you wanna start with you?
Good morning, morning. We're just trying to get right to it. You know, you're coming from such a high level of the federal government, down to, and I'm gonna say Crescent City's high level, too, I don't know if my quote is. But it's definitely a lot less, I think, than what you're coming from. So my question really to you is, how do you, what do you view as the opportunities and disadvantages in joining us? What's this gonna do for you?
The main thing it's gonna do for me, and I'd rather talk about what we're gonna do for you, but I understand the question. I've always been someone who does better and works better when I'm able to see the results of what I'm doing. And for a long time, you know, within the federal agencies and certainly on the Hill, certainly was able to do that. But, you know, it's my now fiance, and I talked about it in my last, it's become untenable. I was basically Senator Reid's designated deal-making guy. You know, I started out in this organization, we had one and a half rest people, and we had probably thirty by the time you retired. Part of that was because he was in leadership. But all the yelling and screaming has to stop at some point, particularly when you're in leadership, because you do have handfuls of things you need to get done every year in terms of spending bills, tax bills, and other things. So my role in all of that was generally to go, keep good relationships with someone, and then try to go work out the best deal representing the co-ops, treating it more like a business than sort of an opportunity to just yell and scream, carry on, which I took very lightly, but it's gotten more and more difficult. So as we've talked about where we wanna go in our life next, and I, in recent years, applied a couple of times for local government jobs, close, far closer to home, just because it is an opportunity to be an integral part of the community, to help solve problems, make recommendations, implement, and actually be able to see the results of all of that. It's important to me. This is sort of my first love, and I got away from it for a long time, even though I've had comparable experiences. But I grew up in a town not much bigger than this, in Southern Virginia, and I'm, I'm really honored to be able to do it. I don't, I don't have a lot of ego in all of this. So, you know, running a big organization and providing the best possible customer service to a community of five thousand people plus visitors and all the rest, has the, feels the same to me as being able to do it on a slightly smoker scale here. I mean, it's more of high visibility jobs than I've had in the past, but again, I don't put a lot of ego, a lot of ego into these things. I just want to do a good job and make sure that everybody's heard, and everybody has an opportunity to just be able to envision and communicate what kind of community you want, or to make that happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Good morning.
Okay, my question to you after this morning was, the tour that you took around City yesterday, what do you view as the, others, what do you, let's go with the phrase. What do you view as the votes of what it means about City as you took the tour yesterday?
I think economic development probably comes to the top, which is a bit of a cheat. It certainly encompasses everything, so I apologize for a little bit of a cheat, but it certainly, it drives everything else. But it also makes you think very comprehensively about what it is that you all and your constituents want community to be, because change is difficult. Some people like their community exactly as it is, other people wanna see more restaurants, more shops, more other things. But it forces you to think sort of comprehensively about how all of that comes together and fits together. You all have some great out here planning documents that I've read through. Between economic development, probably a slightly more robust housing stock and things like that. Everybody I've talked to all agrees that it's a community that's got great potential. It's just a matter of finding the time, staff time, finding resources in terms of grants or things from the state root and the feds, and trying to expand the tax base in a way that makes sense to all of you, not makes sense to me. But to sort of be able to create the kind of community that you want.
Okay. Well, do you have any experience in the city, but?
I don't have experience in the city, but I was in charge of, and the finance director was a director of board during my years in Sergeant-at-Arms office, and we worked very collaboratively on putting together that budget. And budgets obviously have to scale depending on the resources you have and the size of the community. But, I mean, one thing I would say is that if you were to overlay my org chart on Capitol Hill with your org chart here and your responsibilities here, there would be an awful lot of overlap. I mean, when I was appointed Sergeant-at-Arms, the local uphill newspaper that's sort of in-house, not in-house, might as well be industry newspaper, actually the headline for it was Sergeant-at-Arms, the city manager's touch, because I treated the job very much like the customer service job that it is, you know, as a legislative body and as an implementing body on the management side. A lot of what you have to do is say no, but there are ways to go about it, and there are ways to work with somebody that you have to say no to in terms of making them maybe not quite as upset with the outcome of the, you know. I assume you can't build a seven-car garage in city limits, maybe I'll find a way to help someone get to three, and then maybe a car for it. I mean, I'm completely making it up, but I treated it as a customer service job, and it was actually a tremendously fulfilling thing. And at a time when partisanship was getting worse and worse, it was an opportunity to do something truly non-partisan, which is great for me, it's more of the problem-solving end of it, so. Yeah.
Commissioner Moore?
Oh, Commissioner?
Yeah.
So, gee, I was saying.
There you are.
Yeah, I was expecting you guys.
All right, I'm gonna go last.
I have my question.
Okay, so y'all are gonna set off, but I'll be back to Commissioner Moore. I was kinda thinking of us going last, but.
Great. Thank you so much for being here.
Sure, thank you.
And good morning. So if you were offered this job and came on board, what would you see as your first steps in assuming the city manager position? What do you see that you would want to accomplish, say, in the first three months that you would be on board?
My first steps would probably be listen, listen, and listen. Again, I don't put a lot of ego to something like this. I'm humble enough to understand that on my first day in this building, I would know less about what's going on in the community, less about the functions of everything going on than anybody in the building. I tend to trust relatively, I have a lot of trust going into a situation, and you gotta work pretty hard to lose my trust in terms of staff. Once you do, it's probably, it's an issue, but, you know, I think it's incumbent on me to get out of the community as best I can with the stakeholder groups and be able to introduce myself as the person to call that you gotta, you know, anything. Is there any problem to flooding basin or anything else? We're a resource, we're here to help. So trying to do as much of that, spend as much time with all of you all individually as we can or as we're allowed under the open media rules, which, you know. Those are all, those are what they are, but do, within the limits of those rules, you get to know all of you as best you can, try to understand where you're coming from, try to understand how everybody likes to be communicated with. One of the things about a job like this is, well, maybe all of us know what's going on at all times, ability to push information out in the community in as many different methods as you can. Not everybody's got the internet, not everybody likes, most people don't like phone calls. You know, local media is tricky in this day and age just because there are certain newspapers like that. But really, we wanna spend a lot of time getting to know sort of where everyone's coming from, where they wanna go, also spend a lot of time with the finance director. It all sort of derives from there. Need to understand where the resources are coming and going from, in case, get into the cycle of needing to put together physical document for the coming cycle. But I don't think I would come in with a lot of preconceived notions about what's right and what's wrong, or how, I don't have, I don't have one standard way that I come into a job that I'm gonna do these fifteen things first, but I always start wanting to listen and understand. Because the more I'm talking, as I am right now, the less I'm learning all the sort of critical things I need in the job.
Okay, thank you, Brian, thank you.
I'm ready for my question. You talked about doing your, you know, federal spending bills and stuff like that. We're on the opposite end of it, of course. What do you think, your experience as far as like getting grants and appropriations and helping us on that, because we're obviously completely different levels with the federal government.
Of course. In my private practice, I've done a fair bit of grant-making work in terms of identifying opportunities for clients. I typically employ a DC grant writers twenty bucks an hour, so I'll come up with a concept, pitch it to the client, and the client will bring something to me, and we'll figure it out. Sort of the same thing with a lot of the regulatory, so that, you know, I go as far as I can get with it, and then go from there. But in terms of seeking state-level grants, federal grants and other things, I do have, I've got more federal grant-making, but it's just a matter of figuring out who the players are, who the local reps, who the state legislature are in terms of, I think you all are going through this process right now, and that the legislature's coming in, how to have a laundry list of items. But it's absolutely critical stuff to be doing, because there's, even if it's just a grant for a few years or something very specific, it takes pressure off of other parts of the budget. So being able to bring in those sort of outside resources is critical. So also, during my time on the Hill, this is completely different, probably largely a relative to what we're talking about, also created a lot of grant programs under the highway bills and the energy bill, just to try to find ways to get, the federal government itself is not very good at doing grants, and it takes forever, there are a lot of complications, so we try, I don't know why I'm telling you all this.
No, it's fine, this is an opportunity, so don't apologize for talking, but that's what we do want. This is your, this is your time.
But they're not great grant makers, so you gotta stand on top, but it helps to have people who sort of know how to work that system a little bit. But, you know, you gotta treat it like seed corn rather than feed corn. You can use it to sort of supplement and sort of take pressure off of other parts of the budget. It makes it great, but it's also an opportunity to do very discreet things. So it's always been a, to the extent I've got clients who really enjoy, you know, one aspect of it, they definitely enjoy the grant part more than me. I've got a big regulatory problem, can you help me? Because there's nothing fun about that. And for me, the ROI on securing a five hundred thousand dollar federal grant while I'm making sixty thousand bucks trying to chase it down is good for me and for the client, so.
And we do have two grant writers, grant writing firms on contract. We just need to have sometimes some help, giving the direction, telling them what we want to go after, so.
Yeah, and it's the sort of thing I wanna be pretty aggressive about, just because you want your community to grow the way you want to, but the availability of resources just makes it tricky. So you may wanna do, you may wanna redo the town square, but the resources that you're available for, make something just, you know, break through it, put something out of worms. It's an opportunity to move a few things forward at once.
Okay, thank you. You're good, so, okay. Mr. Wilson, so you've had an opportunity to look around Crescent City, a little different from where you're coming from. We don't have agents, it's not our, that, we've got a little bit of management, so. How do you see yourself fitting into the community?
I think my goal is to be an integral part of the community. My fiance was not able to make it down this week, and I apologize for that. Feel the same way. So it's being, first of all, it's living in the city, and joining sort of social clubs and community groups and community service organizations, but mainly it's being visible in town, eating in town, having some drive on there, but also.
You do.
That's why, that's why I didn't say.
You do.
But, you know, also being visible. I mentioned my dogs and cats, and I'll walk the cats, and the cats are standing indoors in Florida. The, you know, out walking my dog, making sure people have my phone number, know that they can contact me, you know, either set up office hours where anybody can come in and talk about whatever they want, and if some people don't wanna just make an appointment. But being, it's important, I think, particularly in a relatively small place, to find as many different ways to interact with as many people as I can, the people that we're providing service to, but just being available. Three benefits, which I like, walking my dog, and I just have this critical, the idea that if we live in Gainesville or someplace, and the community here just doesn't work for me, that's not good. And I think you all require this advantage to live here.
No, it's a good, it's a good one, we're in this, yeah.
And unless we just absolutely can't find it, we're gonna live in the city limits. I mean, we wanna, in doing this, know, my fiance has completely different career goals and aspirations than I did if she comes from the ocean conservation world. You know, this, she'll, you know, nonprofits have flexible work stretches and things, like the work should end up, but I need to be here, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burton?
You're on. No, you just asked the question I just wanted to ask. That was kind of next on the list. So let me just take them in here and go down in one time here. Because after listening to you, you actually answered a lot of these questions that were on this sheet paper. But I will say this, because you've not been a city manager, and, you know, now I'm just kinda grateful a little bit. A lot of the issues that we have here in the city really stem from being kind of an old city. So like right now, we're cleaning new water lines, you know, but we also need, you know, we need a new water system out there. You know, we need a new water, we need a lot of things, okay? Is what I, just to bring things up to date. And so I guess, I don't know where I'm kinda going with this question, but I don't think you've ever dealt with the CRA, with the redevelopment of lighted homes. We also have, you know, our public works, which really is in dire need of some help. Our parks are in need of help. And I guess where would you start? Where would you start? Okay, I mean, how would you line things up? You know, where you would get started to help? Put your thumb on the scales, the way we might take things?
Well, the first question to start is with the five of you all, because you're like the officials, you do something that I couldn't, just actually put myself out there, it's not my nature.
It's not easy, it's not easy.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
You guys have the hard job here, but I mean, you all represent, you know, a hundred percent of the community here, but between listening to you all about some of your priorities and helping set some of mine, and I certainly can bring recommendations to you and community input and stakeholder outreach and things like that, ultimately you make those decisions and those become the priorities through the strategic plan, through the budgeting process. To answer, I think part of the question that you were sort of, you were asking was, I don't have an engineering background, and I don't, I've not done directly done economic development, however, we do have people on the team, and I'm not afraid to ask questions or admit that I don't understand something. So in terms of prioritizing things, I have plenty to experience overseeing big capital construction projects. We built a brand-new off-site mail delivery facility. Deputy Sergeant-at-Arms removed the entire cerni graphics and direct mail operation off-site, so a lot of those same principles apply in terms of putting together requests for proposals and putting together all of the specs and then making selection, but would very much rely on it, as I should, on people on the team that have those bits of expertise, particularly early on. Infrastructure is always critical. Communities nationwide, road issues, sewer and water issues, is, everyone has aging infrastructure, so the ability to, but all of that requires quite a bit of long lead. So have long-term projects sort of going at the same time as I get sort of a laundry list of smaller things at the same time, and things that are, are issues that need to be addressed. So someone yesterday was talking about plate spinning, which I think is a, you know, quite apt example for a city manager or for a commission, is that you gotta be able to do lots of things at once, and I need to, I need to be able to oversee it in such a way that I know exactly what's going on, so I can report to you, but I don't necessarily have, I don't necessarily need to be micromanaging or answering the last detail of work, but set reasonable goals for people, expect them to meet them, give them constant feedback of if I'm getting what I need from them, if you all are getting what they need from them, or not, other than just relying on an annual performance evaluation. So just sort of a constant level of communication happening, to make sure that we're meeting the deadlines that we set, okay?
Thank you. Commissioner Moore? You don't have any questions, okay? Commissioner Moore?
I want to steal yours from last time. So what do you see as far as like, if you were to come here, a future? You gonna stick around for five years or ten years or?
It's our goal, if we're happy and you all are happy, to, this is where we're gonna be. I figure, I've got a couple of big jobs left in me, but it can be just one or it can be a couple, but I'm not, I'm not planning to go ever two years going, huh, I pulled out two thousand, I wonder if I can pull out five thousand, I pull out ten thousand. Pulled out 2,000, I wonder if I can pull out 5,000, can I pull out 10,000? No, we're, we're looking for a place to settle and, and, and twinkle into a community and be part of it. And I've never been much of a job hopper. Most of the jobs that you see where I switch jobs, it's going to move right into something, something else. And then the more recent years I've come in, also a couple of clients for a year just helping out, but no. Our, our goal is to be a, a part of the community and a helpful, involved part of the community and be there for a while.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner to be there.
Yes, thank you very much. So this is a little bit of a follow-up on the earlier question that I asked about your first three months and you said you would do a lot of listening. You just referenced the need to keep a lot of plates spinning because you understand this part of the job. One concern I would have is just because we are such a small staff, would you be comfortable in the first three months, in addition to listening, that being one plate, knowing that you are responsible for keeping the work of the commission moving forward? Because for example, in the, in the main office, we have, you've noticed probably from the organization card, we have the city manager and the clerk. Our clerk is brand new. And traditionally, the city manager, we've had a city manager before who was an attorney and a planner. And he really was closely involved in every aspect of setting the agenda, knowing even though we have an attorney on contract, knowing what the laws are. This, the city has to operate on a, on a daily basis and that includes keeping our agenda of action items moving every month. Can, can you see yourself both, you know, acclimating and listening and also moving, being the key central person responsible for moving these necessary items forward?
Absolutely. I didn't, I didn't mean to de-emphasize the actual nuts and bolts of the job. It's just that one thing I felt, I feel like I need to do is be more of a listener upfront, figure out that community still needs, it's still, and this is an operational job.
Right. And that's the reason I mentioned that because larger municipalities, the city manager will direct, but has people to move those operations here, the city manager really, as we say, it's, it is an operational job.
Right. I mean, it's, it's relatively small staff. Community is going to have different needs at different times. There are going to be emergencies, there are going to be problems. I'm, I'm someone who, I, I don't sit in my office. I'm not, I'm not great at just sitting still in an office. Probably I'm more of a management by walking around style anyway, just sitting with better sometimes to meet people where they are, both physically and, you know, in other ways. But no, I, I'm also a roll up my sleeves kind of guy. I mean, they're just, sometimes you just, everybody's got to be on deck and I completely understand that. I mean, it's, I spent a good bit of my career in the, in the, I need this and I need this right now kind of business, people's expectations of me and I tend to do, tend to do well under that, that, that sort of pressure. But I, I also understand that I'm not going to have a huge staff of people doing everything for me, but there, we, we all have to pitch in from time to time and, and I certainly, I don't even consider pitching in, it just needs to get done and I need to be directly part of it and that's, that's the way it is and it's fun.
Okay. I see that you're a member of the Virginia Bar. You still in good standing with the Virginia Bar? Okay. So the one concern, of course, you know, we have and then we've had an issue before in the past is that if offered the job, we'll be a thorough background check. I mean, you've already done an initial background check, they'll be a more thorough one. Is there anything, any red flags that we're going to have?
No, I can say this with great confidence because I, I recently underwent one for, for another position and came back exactly as I expected, which is nothing, nothing that's going to embarrass you or me too bad. Depending on, depending on, depending on where your level of embarrassment is, but you know, I've got a pretty good, clean record.
One, one thing that, that did, I guess when you was talking about in private, in the private sector, sector, that you had some clients that you represented and there was one, I guess, that, that did throw up for that flag that possibly.
I can think of it. I had two clients that I, I, two clients, one of which I didn't like the, the client because I didn't really like the product, but I liked the, the thing they asked me to do. On, on the one case, it was, it was for Jewel, the bathing company. They hired me specifically to work as part of a team that the age for all tobacco products raised to 21. I don't, I'm not a big, big guy, I don't quite get it, but I, you know, they're, they were incredibly accused of, of trying to market to kids for, at least for a brief period of time. So it, it moved down even though it's a little bit counterintuitive to want tobacco, it's got to 21. So that, I was able to get behind that. I had one foreign client that I really didn't like because they, I told them and it's part of my contract and I'm not going to lie to anybody about, about it. They, they constantly, they constantly pushed the envelope and made me uncomfortable just because I'm not, not only is it terrible business to, to tell somebody something that's untrue and then expect to be able to work with them again. So I just, you know, not for a client, I mean, a big retainer.
Okay.
But I mean, it's, you know, I think it's sort of part of the business that you're occasionally going to come across somebody you don't like.
Especially if you're lucky.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Burton.
I'm good.
You good? Commissioner Moore?
I'm good.
Commissioner Moore?
Good.
Commissioner, you there?
Yes. So if you were offered the position and you accept it, and I'm talking about very realistic timelines here, what would be your projected timeline to come up forward if, if you were offered the job and I thought you'd get married?
Uh, yeah.
On a great day.
On your birthday.
Oh, no, actually, you know, it's George Washington. It's actually his birthday. Okay. It's his birthday.
Great. Can Mary Dan, can Mary Dan have a mattress?
Yes.
It's awesome. I, we're, we're taking a very short trip after the 22nd of February. So I, I'd actually be available, you know, a week or two before. Closing down my practices in particular, Martin, my, the previous managing department passed away. We re-did our financial model to give all of us the flexibility to go out and do things. Gave the opportunity a couple of years ago to infill in house with a really good client. So wrapping that up isn't, isn't all that difficult. There's some paperwork and assignments that I need to do a lot of, that's where I'm from. I could, I can be here, I can be here before, before my wedding. I would just need to be away again for, until probably Thursday or so following.
So at least by March, by the first of March.
I can, I can, I can leave that day for sure. So.
Well, yeah. So would, we also have to make sure that we coordinate with our current interim manager, who's been very helpful and very flexible with us. Would March be too late for you in order to, to your best, but can you, if he wants to stay until the end of February, could you even start in March?
Yeah. I mean, and I, and I understand this situation completely, even, I mean, the only thing I, I really have to do is I've, I've got to get married on the 2nd of September.
Yeah, we all, yeah, we, we had a buddy who put him like that.
No, no, I don't need to keep bringing this up. It's, we made this decision relatively recently when I decided not to let him fill an entire year because they do. If it's helpful, there's no reason in the next few weeks that you offer and I accept for me to come down and spend a couple of weeks with the city manager now and then just come back on full time there. If the sitting man, if the interim manager is here for whatever reason, leave Crescent City quickly. Can't imagine why.
That's good. That's good. No. And, and one, one lesson that we will share with you as going into this, if you keep your fiancee wife happy, then life goes, does a lot, a lot easier. Just saying.
We're, neither of us, neither of us are all that young because we learned some lessons along the way.
He's saying he's happy, well, happy.
Happy wife, happy life, yeah.
Very valid.
So Commissioners, do we, are we good with that? I'm going to, first I'm going to ask you and then I'm going to let you ask us some questions. So how did, how did the football game go last night? I know it was on in my house, but I was not watching it. How did it go last night?
Softball. Thank you. It was actually a great football game. I, I will admit I didn't stay up to the very end. Oh, I had an appointment today. I did wake up in the middle of the night and watch highlights though. No, I have seen the 28, 14 in a game is probably in some ways not as close as that, but I mean, Texas is driving the hot tide of game at the very end. Our best offensive player stripped sack, the opposing quarterback and for a guy who weighs probably 50 pounds more than me, ran it back all the way to the end zone, other end zone, mighty fast.
Okay. So you were pleased, so you were pleased with the outcome?
Yes.
Okay.
Got a lot of Texans in the room? If so, sorry.
I, I, I have learned, I have learned just recently, and this is very beneficial for those of us that don't watch sports, that they do have those highlights and you can watch the highlights and that gives you pretty much the whole game in a very short period of time. And so now you have a conversation opportunity. So at this time, if you have any questions at all, I mean, this is a great opportunity for you to ask us some questions.
I mean, just a handful. And I, and I got a flavor this last night talking to all of you individually. I mean, my, my biggest, having done most of the talking myself, which is normal in an interview, I mean, I, I guess I'm interested in what some of your biggest priorities are. Just, just so I can start thinking about it if you all offer and, and offer the job. But you know, I think that's probably my biggest interest. I've done a lot, I've, I've, I've read the budget. I understand bomb ratings and things like that, but some of your priorities would be useful in my thinking as well. That's not asking too much of you all.
Commissioner, do you have anything to add?
I'd like to tell you one of the things that I've been working on for six months is trying to get the, the middle school under our ownership from the school district. So I'm working with the督委 committee to work that out and try and effectuate that, a transfer for as little money as possible. So it's been a long, it's like, but we're getting very close to having something together. But that's my, that's what I've been working on for six months and taking the work out.
All right.
Commissioner, you have, Commissioner to be there?
Sure. So I'm third generation here, although the last 10 years are the, the time that I've been a permanent resident, this was my second home for my whole life, my life continued at home.
Yeah.
Right. So Crescent City, like many small towns, had an incredible golden age of architecture and business. We were kind of the central business area for the wider area. We have a historic district, we have many beautiful homes. My husband and I came here because it was a beautiful place to live and one of my goals, which, or my hopes, would be that Crescent City can be restored, not necessarily replaced. There are just, we are a classic small town, walkable community that many other small towns and, I mean, many other developments in Florida were modeled after. The developer DP Davis, who built Davis Islands in Tampa and Davis Shores in St. Augustine, actually was from Palatka and it's pretty clear. My husband and I lived in Tampa on Davis Island for 20 years and we selected it because it had this wonderful small town feel. It's pretty clear that DP Davis, the 1920s developer, he modeled his developments on these turn of the century small towns in northeast Florida that he was so familiar with. So again, the hope is that we could restore and our best qualities would be.
Thank you. It's actually really helpful.
Commissioner Burke, do you have any, some of your priorities or?
I don't know, we're nuts and bolts. I think that we, we really have to start maintaining our city. We, we really don't have a maintenance type structure. We have a lot of trees that fall down during hurricanes that probably should have been cut down and maintained beforehand. So we really don't have the schedule to do any of that. We have a small public works department, so it's a tough thing to, to do. The other thing is economically, you know, we're working very, very hard, especially on Central Avenue in different places and a big thing that, that just kind of held back on that, to kind of get that moving at a, at a better pace, is a lot of people have moved into Crescent City and bought homes and, and using those areas for storage, which is not helping us at all. Okay? And of course, we want this to be a nice walkable city. So my next kind of thing that just drives me nuts is, I think Crescent City, if you go through it, there's, it, it's all over Crescent City. You know, where people don't maintain their lawns, people don't maintain our parks. It's just all the city. It, it doesn't mean go to any section of the city and, and see this. And our parks are right now are in, in shambles. A couple of them are very much in shambles that we need to look at. So, so mine is a nuts and bolts kind of thing that, that kind of needs, needs to happen.
Really good. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
I'd like to say I'm new at this. So.
Not company then.
New elected. So, but I would like to also say that I have born and raised Crescent City. And it's good to be on this commission because I'm learning things that I didn't even know about my city. And also there are things that I'm probably going to raise with you all that you didn't know about the city also. So, but I'm in the midst of learning and I'm really into, I'm an educator, retired educator. And I'm really into getting my thoughts and ideas together about what we can do for our young people in the city. So I've always wanted to reach out. I have reached out when I was teaching here in the city. Actually, all my teaching was done here in Crescent City. I started George Senior Middle School as an assistant. So while I was working as an assistant, I was calling school full-time with a family and a husband and a child. It was very hard and many times I wanted to give up, but I didn't. So here I am. I never thought I'd be up here, but you all, it, it's just an opportunity that was presented to me and I'm very grateful and I know I'm going to learn much more.
And, and it's also a bonus for the commission though. I would have to say that probably one of the things that, that is important to me is, is some economic vitality here. As you know, we do have businesses that, that come, that come try to start and just seeing how we can help them be successful. You know, a, a new restaurant has to have a certain amount of business in order to stay in business. And so that's one thing is how do we bring people into the community to utilize those businesses? How do we bring more businesses? Because those businesses aren't going to come if the people aren't here to support them. You've got to have, have a little bit of that. And so that's something right now that I, I know is, is before all of us. You know, it used to be this was a very, this was a bustling city. I mean, there's a lot going on here. And so it's, it's, we've had a lot of influx of new people coming to the community and how do we, how do we work with that in bringing those right businesses here that can be successful? You know, it's, because it hurts all of us when one opens up and they're only here for six months.
Right.
And, and having own businesses and being on both sides of that, you know, I know how hard that is and, and to be able to make an investment because it's a huge investment here. And so how do we attract those, those businesses so they will come? So that, that's just kind of one of the things that I see right now is, that's, that's an issue for all of us.
Appreciate that.
You have a good question.
That's super helpful. Now, I, I probably ought to get someone else a chance.
Okay, that's fine. And I know you're, you're flying out this afternoon.
I, I am. I got booked a late flight.
Okay.
I, I may move it up a little bit so I don't have to drive around in a smaller yard, but.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time and for coming to Crescent City. We greatly appreciate it and.
This has been great. I'm, I'm super grateful for the, for you all taking the time to talk and, you know, I'll, you have, clearly I have a lot of passion for the city. I mean, I see a lot of faces that were here last night, so it's, want people, involve people, it's, it's important.
I have a lot of respect for the job that you have to do at Sergeant at Arms and, and Commissioner to be there, you, we know that in Tallahassee with our Sergeant at Arms, you, you. with our Sergeant of Arms, you juggle many hats there. You juggle many hats there.
I don't get to carry a scepter or anything like that. I'm sure I might get away with that aspect of it.
Yeah, but it is, it is a tough job. It is a tough, and I can see when you said that, how it relates to city government. I can, I see that too. So we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
With that, I'm going to take a five-minute recess. And Commissioner. Commissioner Burke, you have flowers. Thank you very much for being here. We greatly appreciate that. And we had an opportunity to meet you and Miss Ashley last night. So thank you for being here today.
Well, thank you for the invitation, I appreciate it. It's been great so far.
Good. I'm going to ask you, yes, last night, and I'm going to ask you today, if you can just kind of give that overview, three-minute overview pitch on who you are and what you bring.
Great, so Dwayne Flowers, and I'm from a little town called Houston, Georgia. It's about four thousand people now. When I grew up, it wasn't that big. But we're outside of Augusta, grew up on a farm, hard work all my life. Dad was an industrial worker and a paper mill. And my mom was a schoolteacher for over thirty years. And we had a farm and three hundred hogs and about twenty black Angus cows. And we had a drive tractor going up, so that's a lot of farm. The hard work's not sparring me, and so that's kind of my DNA. We, so after high school, I decided to join the police force. Because when I was younger, I either wanted to be a policeman or a fireman or a football coach. So a couple of my other friends went into the law enforcement world. So I decided I was going to go in the law enforcement world. And I spent thirty years in law enforcement. And started with the Augusta Police Department, which is a large city, you know, medium-sized city, probably five hundred thousand and then metropolitan area. And we had an opportunity, have a little golf tournament that you may have heard of, called the Masters. So handling events and things of that nature. We had a river there. We had a lot of events on, so a lot of security details there. So experience with that. Also, I, so I've always had the opportunity to work my way up and then promoted several times throughout the law enforcement ranks. And then, so in two thousand eight, excuse me, two thousand four, went back to my hometown to police force and with anticipation that one day I would be the chief. And I was in two thousand twelve. And made a lot of great progress there. Modernizing the police department and also reducing crime. So in twenty-twenty, amidst of all the COVID and other things that were going on in the police world, started looking outside of that, ended up in Wadley, Georgia. Actually, with their police department, do some consulting work. And their city administrator decided to go back into their private world. And I was asked to fill in. And so six months later, I became the permanent city administrator and been there a little over four years now. But we made some great progress. We built some infrastructure that had been badly neglected. And we're actually moving the city forward right now really well.
Thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the, we're just, Commissioner Vito, or coffee, okay? Because we're supposed to start on her end this time, so.
Why did you start with me?
Not start on the hands. Just keeps it easier and that way I can keep up with it, you know? Otherwise, otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and start with it. Well, I don't want her to miss out on stuff. That's important, I apologize. Coffee maker only brews so fast. Well, that is something that we do need to look into is, and I've asked that multiple times as far as a new coffee maker. Here, I have one too, but I brought one in here, yeah, for in here. Because sometimes I just want to have everybody like. There she is. Okay, Commissioner Vito, you're on.
I'm going to start with the other end.
We did not know because we're trying to keep it. I'm trying to keep it that way and we didn't want to miss out on anything.
That's fine, just coffee. Welcome, good morning, thank you for being here. At some point to deviate just a little bit. You mentioned that you modernized the police department and reduced crime. Do you want to share with us what some of the key measures were that you took in reducing crime? And the kinds of issues, crime issues that you revealed in them?
Yeah, great. So as far as modernization went, we were, we had a lot of old equipment. So, you know, we made a pitch to the council, our commission, Houston's commission, and we pitched to them about upgrading our radios for safety and then also putting computers in our car to do reports and things of that nature. We took a approach and we called it Total Police, which is kind of like community police and code enforcement together, where we went into areas like, so I did a study of all our calls, where the most of our calls were going to, took some statistics like that and put it together. We went and focused it on a particular area where there's a lot of just neglect in the neighborhood, a lot of violations, people parking the wrong way on the street, which seems like simple things, but they're parking on the street. And so we asked, we asked all the, we started out with an upgrade. Actually, we went in there and we worked, and I say Total Police, and we worked with our fire department, our code works together, we all work together. We went in there and we cleaned up the streets. And we started by asking people to park in the driveways. And we went through and we cleaned all the curbs and gutters. They don't spruce up, gave them a little spruce up. We painted numbers on the sidewalk, on the curb for their houses. And whilst we were doing that, we were inspecting little things like water meter covers that were broken or missing because, you know, policemen are finally walking at night to somebody's house and it's a step in there and, you know, breaking ankles, tearing the knee, those kind of things, those little things like that. We're just literally the thing, but what it did is we're generating pride in the community. It built relationships in the community. It allowed people to know who we are and feel free about talking to us. And you would find out things that were going on, because you didn't know what was going on. So then we addressed those issues correctly. So that's some of the things we did. We relied on our sheriff's office at the time, which was a huge sheriff's office, and to do a lot of our investigating work. And we just took, we took that back over. So, because from the smaller things like petty thefts and things of that nature. So we took a lot of that over, other than major crimes, we still have a sheriff's office to handle it. And then during all this, we found out we have, you know, there's drugs usually in every community. It's just a fact of where we are today in society. But we found out we had a couple of bigger drug problems and we addressed those directly. So all that, we set it forward. My philosophy, and I'll be glad to tell you this, and what I stood on was that our job as the police force was to make the criminals, the criminal element uncomfortable in our town. So either they were going to get in line or they were going to leave or they weren't going to visit anymore. So that's kind of, it's kind of a very proactive approach. But that's what we needed at the time.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that, very informative. Okay, Commissioner Laurie?
Sure. You're a city manager now, or city administrator. So how do you really view the relationship between the city manager and the commission?
Well, it's a working relationship, right? So you are the governing body elected by fifty percent plus one, right? So you're a governing body, so I put you there. So the citizens expect you, trusted you to make good policies and so forth for the city, the best interest. It's my job to carry out those policies, but also to bring you good information, good ideas. More in one way to solve it. There's always more than one way. And this is kind of the best, the best way to solve a problem or move the city forward, create, you know, business or whatever it may be. It's a communicated, it's a communicated honesty. And I have to earn your trust. I'm most confident I'm going to earn your trust.
Commissioner?
Okay, I have one question. Why are you interested in going to the city manager of Crescent City?
Okay, so number one, location, location, location. So it's a similar size, but I'm working it out. Got some good things going on. It is a great location. My wife does a lot of business in the Orlando area. So she's down here a lot. And, you know, I'm fifty-five, so I figure, if you look at my resume, I don't jump around jobs a lot. I usually stay somewhere ten, twelve years. So I'm looking for a place that, you know, we're moving in the right direction. You don't, there's a threat that you are falling backwards like we've got some positive momentum. So that's good. There's challenges there. I like to be challenged and get things done. So that's going to be also good. And those are the reasons, and so I think it's a good fit.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Burke?
Yeah, I kind of have a similar question. I mean, you've been very successful in Georgia. And so I was curious as to why you're even. I mean, why are you something that's good?
Sure.
But, you know, we have a five-year strategic plan down here. And have you taken a look at that, at my budget? And is that something you think you can help us implement?
Sure, so all strategic plans are great. They're great plans. But, you know, it's like eating the elephant, right? You've got this five-year plan. So one bite at a time. And it cannot interrupt the other aspects of the city. So we can. You tell me what your number one priority is, let's go to work on it. But all plans are plans. Like you go to a football game and if you have a plan or game plan, but the defense throws you something different, you want to change that plan, right? So prioritizing what's number one, let's knock it out. As we're planning for the redo of the backfield lines. And what's happening, that's what we go that way.
Okay, I have one other question, just kind of a follow-up. You say that you have a police department?
We do, we do. Oh, now we do, yes, now.
Okay, and I was just looking through all your references. I didn't see, I'm sorry, you had a general fund of about two million dollars?
That's right, close. It's gone up this year, but.
Okay, well, my question is, you know, how did you fund your, how many people do you have on your police department? And how did you fund that?
Yeah, so, uh, they eat up a lot of the, uh, adverbal taxes. That's, that's number one. It's, uh, uh, so currently, um, we have, uh, eight full-time employees over the police department.
Okay.
Yeah, eight full-time employees and a part-time employee. And then we have two part-time, one in the office and another part-time officer. So they eat up a lot of the adverbal taxes, they really do. It's, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a budget drain. And, um, uh, my, my counsel, they're very partial to the, to the police. That's one of my frustrating things is, I used to be a police and I think they can do more with less, you know? But over there, but it does take a lot of money.
Well, it, it takes a lot of money and that's why I questioned you because, uh, you know, at one point we had a police department here.
Right.
And just the running, if this department, I think it was five or six, uh, took us almost about eight hundred thousand dollars at the time. And then it was told that we needed more than five or six police officers to actually be legitimate, so to speak. Which is, you know, so I'm thinking to myself, I saw a two-million-dollar budget that you had there, I was thinking, oh, gosh, you know? That you probably written up most of that, so.
Yeah, I'll give you an example, um, just a second.
Do you do another second question? I know, I know. You are, you said another second question, Commissioner, don't they come, I go to see?
Totally, totally, so, uh, we, uh, we got two-point-three million dollars in taxes last year. And, uh, and we spent over budget eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the police department last year.
Last year.
So, uh, a lot of overtime, but, uh, and a lot of, that's one of my heartbreaks, a lot of unnecessary overtime. But, uh, so a lot of, maybe why they say you have enough, there's a study, there's been some studies about how many police you need based on call volume. So that's very subjective. You know, it's, you know, it just depends where you're at. If you're gonna need, you know, say, if you have, let's say, two mile square area in New York City, you're gonna need a lot more police officers than you need a two-mile square area in Creston City, Florida. So just to put a number out there saying you need one, you need one-hundred-and-seventy-five officers per sh- per shift. It's very subjective, I'm just gonna bring that.
You know, I think I see that you're, you're very positive about that, but we're not, sure.
Right.
And I, and I hope that you look at, at that aspect of us.
I have.
And what are your views?
I, I read that. If it was up to me for the city, why would we get some things done that we need to get done? We would do the same thing, yeah. It was up to me, but I'm government board, right?
Okay, let's not, let's, we're getting into the, yeah.
It is called the degree.
Yeah. So, um, Mr. Flowers, first off, I want to say, um, you, I know that you've made some additional requests of information, just trying to get a, a really good feel of the city. Very appreciative of that, you've obviously have done your homework. And so yesterday you had an opportunity to tour the city and see it through multiple eyes. Tell me, tell me what your, your thoughts are and whether you feel like, um, we, we could, your skills could, could help us improve in some of our areas that you see.
Sure, so, uh, first, you know, first thing, I think that it's a lot prettier doing this online.
Thank you.
And I think that, uh, you would, uh, we would, I would, I, I obviously want to, and I know the, I've been rebranding, so I go through the next step and, and be very proactive with the, uh, with the digital branding, right? To get it out there, uh, promote, promote the beauty of the city. Maybe that would generate interest, right? For businesses, for even give pride, more pride to your residents, they obviously do. A great turnout this day and a great turnout last night, and so people are engaged. So those are some of the things I would do off the bat. It's just saying, hey, let's clean up, you know, we need to clean up City Hall a bit, um, you know, being on that, making it look great. And, uh, so we would do things like that, make sure our buildings are tip-top before we go out and, and, uh, you know, we're asking, I know we're asking some of the businesses to do it, do the CRA, which is great, but we're gonna need to take care of, and I would. We're gonna hit the ground running doing that. And, uh, I've done that. I remodeled my police station, I remodeled our community center at Habsburg. We remodeled, I ended up remodeling our community center there in Wadley. So we would make some great improvements. I got pictures, I'm glad to share all those with you. But that's what I'd do first of all, right? So then when you do that, then we're gonna start, we'd have to promote, we got to take advantage of, of these natural resources you have around here. We got to promote that, uh, and to get some things going and get that traffic. And I know you want it controlled, you don't want it to just go wild, you don't want, uh, you know, a thousand people showing up here tomorrow, you know? But you got to control these things and make plans as far as, uh, you know, setting up strategically, traffic flows and things of that nature. Really promote, uh, the, what you have here, which is a great natural resources and beauty and get people out that interstate.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Vito, then.
Sure, and by the way, I, I asked how you reduce crime, not that I was suggesting you would run a police department here, but just your approach to practical problems.
Sure.
Which, um, it seems like you have a lot of experience with solving practical problems. Where is this? So, um, can you tell us about, um, your, a little bit about your, um, management style? And how you would, uh, see yourself going about managing a, a new group of people here in Creston City?
Great, so, um, I'll tell you my first thirty days of me building, building relationships. You know, first couple, if I wanted to, if you wanted to be the captain, if you were to say, call to him, I'd love me to share. I want to find out, yeah, I'm the emergency management director, I'm sure you all do, right? As a councilman, you gotta meet him, right? And then of course all our environment and our public safety stuff is important. But as I meet his dad, you just learn, you know? But, uh, I'm a, I'm a common sense, uh, practical kind of guy. If it, if it's not broke, I'm not gonna break it. So you have to learn, you have to learn your employees and see what they do best. And everybody's different. I'm a very happy-go-lucky guy, coming every morning, positives, speaking to everybody, seeing how their day is. But some people don't react to that well. People I work with now, they're like, five people in City Hall and, you know, three, I'm, hey, how you doing? Everyone, and it's papers flowers. It's like, you know, whether I'm scared to death, I mean, but she's like the best employee I got up there. And so that's with her, you know? I try to, I try to make her smile, but.
She holds happiness within.
Yes. Uh, so that's, that's my management style and I, and I do self-check, right? So speaking to my employees, I gave them all an assessment. I gave them a questionnaire last year. Tell me what you think about me, basically. It was, you know, it's about ten questions and I asked them to go through it and ask, compared to today, we were three years ago at the time, when I first started. And give me the pros and give me the cons. And I'm, so I, I take a few back from them as well. But I try to encourage them to do the best they can be. I want to build them up that they leave and go work for another city or that they want to stay here. That, you know, when I retire, ten, twelve years from now, they can take my place and you don't have to do this. So I can build them up, train them up into, to succession plan, right? So, uh, those are the things that we want to do and, uh, that's how, that's how I manage it. And I encourage them, uh, to think for themselves. They come to me with a problem, I'm gonna say, hey, give you three, give me three suggestions you have. And then when they can find it well, they'll probably figure out what's the best avenue to take. So that's how, that's how, that's how I do it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Laurie? Yes, I know it's such a, your iPad there, some technology here. How experienced are you with computers, technology? It's something that we definitely need a little bit of help around here, but.
Yeah.
Not me, but I'm sitting off.
That's, that's in my personal swat analysis. That was a pro and a con, right? I was, a lot of things I did, more did, but we have an older, much older, uh, population in our city. And I got some pushback from, from that because a lot of them still, they still wanted me to go to the post office and hang up notices. And so, uh, but we have accommodated them. I did, I do it in the newsletter, so they actually have a big piece of paper. But, uh, uh, I think I've advanced technology greatly. I know I can do it in the city of Wadley. You know, I have a wife that's, uh, that's kind of her itch. She's a, she's a travel agent, she owns a, uh, she call it, it's called socially operated. She does some social media, um, branding and marketing. So I get a lot of training at home. Did that wrong, that doesn't look good, so. But, uh, for our technology, I, uh, I, uh, is, everything's moving that way. And so I'm very adept to it. But I'm an Android guy, not an iPhone guy.
Oh, I could, I could.
I mean, great too. We all do along.
That's right. Matter of fact, I have a city phone and for a long time I had, uh, I tell you, I had, uh, my mayor's an Apple guy, but anyway, uh, so I had Android, obviously. And then, so I got my city phone, I was gonna give me an iPhone so I can FaceTime where he's out of the country, whatever. And we got in the hurricane, you know, hurricane clean is really, really hard, it's a very version out of the face. So I'm trying to get all these government numbers off my iPhone. So I went to the one in the firemen, they had the city, we switched the SIM cord out so I could actually function under stress.
I think this, the, the iPhone, the phone that we have for the city manager.
It's a new, it's a new.
So it has a new kind of diversity, Android versus iPhone, it's in the whole community.
My, I'm an Android and my entire family go with iPhone and they constantly tell me for Christmas I'm getting an iPhone. And I can't FaceTime with them, like, oh, man, I don't really want to. Commissioner Moore? I know they're not watching, so.
Do I give you, do I give you a third of your comments?
Well, I'm going this way, I'm going this way.
Okay, sure. It's just a quick question. You know, um, we have some enterprises here, we've got gas company and our water. Have you ever managed a, a gas company or any type of enterprise? Have you ever done any of that sort of stuff?
Sure, so we do, we have water source sanitation. And we do that, don't have gases. But I'll tell you that I'm a quick learner. I have resources to tap into, I have questions that I trust. The neighboring cities both have gas. And matter of fact, when I began with city manager, the most thing I ever knew about a water main break was standing out there directing traffic around there. I can fix them now, you know, I mean, I, you know, I just grew up on a farm, you know, so it's just, just the size of the magnitude, right? So I fix pipes and stuff like that. So that doesn't scare me, but energy, the, the water, the water resource and sanitation, I'm sure is gonna be similar as far as the enterprise part of it, with the finances and things of that nature.
Yeah, because we, we definitely need someone that has an understanding, especially for our gas enterprise.
So again, I'm a quick learner, I'll run into that.
I, I do know yesterday he was asking questions like, um, how much water does a water tank, you know, how many gallons? And I'm like, that's not a fair question. Okay, Commissioner Vito, I'm gonna come back down to you. You ready for this? Okay, Commissioner Vito?
Sure, and, um, just to assure you, we do have a very capable, um, gas department director, although, um, he has been here for many years and will at some point be retiring. Anyway, so my question to you is, um, can you tell us a little bit about your style of communicating with, um, commission members? How you keep them informed about city activities and operations?
Yeah, great, so, uh, I think I was, I was doing you there last night, but, uh, so, um, one of the things that, um, that I do on a weekly basis, or, uh, is every Monday, and I'm using it, so we used to do it at breakfast, but every Monday mornings are kind of chaotic. So we, every Monday afternoon at lunchtime, we usually, all my department heads, leaders, they come in together and we discuss. I check, uh, you know, I check with the key guys over the weekend, uh, Monday morning, hey, anything major happens, we can't even know about. And I'll give the information out to you quickly, but we usually have staff meetings every Monday and so I know what the issues are. And then we also review what's coming up, obviously. And, um, we have a system called TextMyGov and it's a, it's a, it's a great system. I, I'd be glad to share that to y'all, but our citizens can opt-in and they can get messages from us. Everybody's on Facebook, over people told me that a lot. So everybody's on Facebook, so we get TextMyGov and they opt-in and they also can report problems to us as well. And it's a great system, it's not really that expensive, it's very, uh, the city our size, this size. But anyway, um, so all my councilmen are on that mass system like that. Now, the thing about that message is going out, obviously, one way. I would always tell them, hey, you know, feel free to call me again if you have more questions. But I blast, I say blast them, but I give them, uh, stuff that I think they need to know right away. Obviously, I have to learn, y'all wants more, or we wants not. But I'm generally gonna give you your information, hey, we got a water main break, guys working, seeing, they're working on it, keep you updated, you know? And, uh, and then they have to call me if there's a problem. And a lot of times y'all get the information, well, I do, y'all call them and say, you know, there's a water main break over here, worthy, so. But anyway, uh, but I communicate that way, um, don't give you every little thing that's going on, who's, really doesn't, you don't really do that, in my opinion, unless you just want that. But anything major, anything that might, I say, hey, this, this might, you know, cause y'all to get a phone call, you're gonna know about it quicker.
Who turned it here?
Oh, I got you. So, so anyway, that's it, I communicate, I think I make it substantially well, I think they would tell you that. I know y'all won't be surprised, right? I don't, I don't like being surprised.
Thank you, that's important.
Question like this, do you have experience with CRAs or mainstream?
Yeah, so, so the CRA, we have something similar, right? And sorry, things of that nature, so that would be yes. The mainstream, uh, we don't have it in our city, as it's on our list. We used to have a development factory, which is similar, uh, and they shut it down before I got there. And it needs to come back. The issue is we were so far behind with our, uh, infrastructure work, we need to do, not really focus. I'm improving our police department equipment greatly, our fire department equipment greatly, and our infrastructure. We've been great shots in four years that I've been there. And we're, and we're in the process of building a new wastewater plant like now, so.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Burke, you're still not caught, I mean, you're still a little ahead, but I'm gonna look at you. Do you have a question?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes, and I have two questions, but.
Okay, well, you know, I don't have a question.
Very clear, okay. As you know, we have a small staff. So one question I have for you is, um, are you accustomed to writing requests for proposals and other bid documents?
I am.
Okay, um, just to make sure, and then, um, I've asked this pretty much of everyone. If you work for this job and accept it, do you have a timetable in mind, um, on how long it would take you? What, what is your timetable for taking this position if you would be offered that?
Sure, uh, the minimum I'd like to offer my city would be thirty days. I'd really like six weeks though, which would be more, I mean, I was saying, you know, four, I'd really like to get six weeks, yeah. That was acceptable.
So the first of March?
Yes, ma'am. And then you have to get it from a catfish, right?
So, Commissioner Vito, were those your two questions?
They were.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
I don't, I think I'm good.
I think you're good.
I think I'm good.
Um, I think, um, Commissioner Moore? I think Commissioner Burke, you are caught up because, boy, this, Commissioner Vito, she.
I tried to stay with her, but.
No, I know, it's tough, it's tough, okay. Um, with that, this is your opportunity, put us on the hot seat. That's why, that's why we had the tip to turn down. That's, that's where now, so this is your opportunity to ask us, um, any questions that, that you might have.
So, uh, a lot of we, we actually talk about it and I can tell, but, uh, but I guess, what did you think? What would you say is the most significant challenge I'd have to walk any day long?
Commissioner Burke, I'm starting you.
People, man, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Employees?
Well, employees and possibly commissioners, yeah. Yeah, just people, people in general, very versatile and a lot of ideas.
Sure.
A lot of our own ideas. So, so you kind of bring all of this together. But yeah, I think that'd be, you know, that'd probably be very significant, can't be started.
Commissioner Moore?
Don't be looking at me like that.
Commissioner Moore, do you have anything that you can say? Commissioner Moore?
I would just say, I would agree with Commissioner Burke and also the public, you know, because that's, you work for us, but you also work for the public, that's one of the things. You might, if someone's gonna come in the door and say, hey, I want to talk to the city manager. You know, they might just want to ask about what their zoning is or something like that. It's like, they're gonna want to talk to you because you're the boss, so, and you're the one in charge. So that's just, you got to be ready for that, spending half your day talking to people. But that's quite good, that's what you have to do. But you do have some great, and you would have some great staff supporting you, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Beattie?
Sure. Um, I think it would be, you know, probably somewhat similar to what you experienced coming into your current city manager job. Um, you would be the key, like, person for a lot of projects that we have going on. We have, um, the watering project underway. We've requested legislative appropriations that are going to have to be monitored. Um, we meet every month and, um, you would have to, well, you would have to work with a very new clerk, who is my understanding, um, as far as I know, has not previously been a city clerk before. Um, so, and you would have to become familiar with all the specific court laws. Um, and make sure that our agendas and, um, ordinances get properly noticed, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, I don't, uh, discount the, um, manage the people management, but there'll be a multiplicity of things to do.
Sure.
Keeping, keeping things going.
Okay. So, just follow up, well, everything. Then it, it, what is, is that, you know, read law, understand law. I, I'm very confident I can handle that, you know, and understand it, get in line. And I'm sure there's, I know there's a Florida City County Manager Association. We have a mutual attorney and, uh, you know, I'll use those resources to make sure, I'll reach out, I'll make the relationship. So I think, and the rest of you, uh, you know, I think people used to ask me what's, what it takes to be a good police officer. And it's the same thing that it takes to be a good police, uh, uh, city manager, right? That's two things, I think. That's common sense and people skills. And I think I excel in both of those areas. So, um, following people's problems and listening to people, um, and then communicate with you guys, go back to your communication. Everybody y'all may have a different idea, but you know, it takes three to make something happen, right? So it's my, my job is to bring you the data, the information, and what I feel like is the best, uh, uh, process for you now. Like, you disagree with this, I mean, I disagree with this, but agree with this, Burton. It doesn't mean that I'm taking sides. This is what I really think. My stuff is going to be factually based. And, and what can we afford, what's the data show, and to your point, what the legal implications would be. And that's how we work this out.
Um, I do like your approach and that, and I know we had a former city manager and that was, that was his ideology also is that we got to take pride in ourselves first. Um, and, and that, and that is, that is definitely been proven to be a benefit. Um, I think as we, as we've taken pride in ourselves, we saw the ways to go, you know, there's some budget concerns. Um, we see others, others taking pride in, in, in their properties as well. And so that's, um, I like that you, that you did bring that approach, that you also bring that approach. And so that would be one of the things that with me and when you asked me is, is of course always going to be people. There's going to be, um, you know, managing staff, um, living around and keeping it up. And, um, and, and then dealing with the public, um, and, and being accessible. Um, that to me is, 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 is important.
Sure.
And you saw the, you saw the city, um, yesterday and you've had an opportunity to meet, you know, a lot of our, uh, and some of our residents and of course the commissioners and stuff. It's, it's definitely multiple personalities.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's true.
You have any other questions with us?
I think I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have any other questions?
I would, one question. Would you envision yourself being a present city moving here?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh, you know, the caveat of that, we talked to a couple of y'all last night, is I have a thirteen year old son. I want to put him in the best school situation I can. So I'm not telling you it's out of round, but I don't want to commit to that without doing a little bit more research on the educational process. Opportunities for him. He's an avid golfer. Uh, so it's things of that nature from, of course, for his golf teams or whatever sports or whatever. You might potentially give him opportunity to maybe go to college and not cost me to pay that tuition would be great. Uh, those same kind of things. So I don't, not against it. Matter of fact, we saw a little house, uh, a little earlier today. We actually called on it just to, just in case and to kind of try to look at it because, um, it's at least, uh, you know, there's a woman here, uh, Georgia, until we end in the school year. He's in eighth grade and will start high school.
And I understand that I had a golfer also and she, through her senior year, um, she went more academic, but ended up going more academic. But I understand the importance of that with golfing.
Sure.
Well, I have a very big golf here and they have a lot of teams actually, something to look into. Um, and we have one over here. We have the Oaks Resort heater. We're about to hold a golf tournament there on February eighth in, in memory of one of our former, um, football coaches. Um, they hold it since they have the company annual golf tournament. I didn't see it play last night. My husband looked at me, he's got me kidding. But, um, but anyway, so there are some, there are some of those opportunities you want to look into. And I know that the Oak, I mean, the, um, the golf course is municipal course in the latter. But they host, um, junior golfers, um, as a matter of fact, our church fell in the dollar show to the majority of the, the, our church fell in the dollar show towards those golfers.
September eighth, we actually are going to be down here because my granddaughter, she's cheering, she's cheering. She's, she's bored. She has no heart publicly, but she's cheering in Orlando. So we're going to be down there weekends and maybe get the golf tournament too.
Well, thank you very much. With that, um, which, which we need to access or are we good to go on to our next?
I need to access.
Okay. I'm going to take five minutes. And Mr. Adams, welcome to Crescent City. Um, and you were, um, bright up, bright early this morning. Crescent City in here. Thank you, sorry for the late. Um, we told you that, anticipated that a little bit yesterday. So, um, but that's good. That means that we've got, you know, with everybody that we're engaged. Um, so with that, I'm going to start off with, I know you did it last night. If you would just kind of give us your three minute elevator pitch about who you are and, and what you bring.
Good morning. Uh, again, just wanted to apologize for my voice. Still trying to get over this cold. Uh, so, Joe Adams, I, I've, uh, my background is primarily, was primarily in information technology. That's where I did, uh, majority of my, my career. Um, and then I, in the city of Sebastian, I went, I was fortunate enough to win a seat down there at City Council. I served two terms here, uh, one as their vice mayor. And in doing so, I realized, you know, I, I actually liked the work. I enjoyed, uh, working with the, the residents and the cities, the city staff to do whatever I could to make the city better. Uh, so after coming to that realization, I actually went back to school and got my, my, some public administration. Uh, then I started out with employment and I was the city administrator for the city of Oak Hill. Uh, I had that position for a year until the council changed. Uh, so I, I kind of, I'd say I've a pretty good experience in that one year just for the reason that the city staff was extremely small. The staff was total of six, uh, three public works, one code enforcement, one admin assistant and a part-time building inspector and myself. So I got my hands in everything. Uh, I was doing the HR stuff, finance, the health benefits, you know, efforts, the planning. Um, going out to look at, uh, code violations with the code officer and preparing the, uh, agenda because I was also the clerk. Getting things done for, for his resolutions, all of that. So, yeah, talking with, uh, other state officials or community officials, um, attending things. It was, it was a full plate. So if nothing else, I think it gave me a, a broad, very broad, um, introduction to what city government is and, and different functions within city government.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna, um, we're gonna start from questioning, um, and so I'm going to start with Commissioner Burton and, um,
Okay.
Well, it's down on your end. Start with, you know, the question. So I'm trying to be fair here. I'm trying to be fair.
There's a reason I started with finish. You don't ever start in the middle.
I'm starting middle and we're good. So I'm going to start on your end and we're gonna, um, start with your first question.
Okay. Um, first question, number one, I hope to walk you here and I hope you actually get rid of this, this cold. It's been going on for a lot of people lately. Uh, so what do you view as the opportunities and disadvantages in joining us? What, what is it that you've come and accomplished?
Uh, just in going around the street, seeing the, seeing that the, uh, the plan that you guys have. It seems like there's a lot that we would like to get the, the CRA council to handle. That's something that I, I actually piqued my interest, uh, trying to revitalize the area, making it, um, business friendly, attracting more businesses to the area. Uh, not only for, you know, tax purposes, but, but to help your, your residents. Uh, they'll, or jobs, uh, or places that they'll need to spend their money here to get the things they need rather than going out to town and saving their dollars with them. They, even like I said, too, I, it's very well kept. That's one of the things that I noticed. It was very well kept and I liked that over here and I did it very nice. Uh, for me, what I'm hoping to get is, is that more experience is to help the city get to where they want.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Actually, you answered my question. I was going to ask you what was your impression of the city. So, um, you want to evaporate a little bit more? What you saw on your tour?
Uh, like I said, it's very well kept. And I was wanting to, that we, we stood up to, um, and for people such a small city to have your own utilities. That's something that struck me because that's not, that's not a lot. So for you to be able to have your own utilities to provide those services to your citizens, I thought was very, very common. And, uh, I, I hope the citizens appreciate it because it's not something that, uh, we find in many places. And two, not, um, being on sewer and not on set, especially being so close to the river. That's a thing towards reducing pollution. And that's something that everybody's striking. Sebastian is still predominantly sick.
Unfortunately.
Yes. So coming here to hear that you, you have sewer, that was something that was pretty special. Uh, it was pretty great.
It's something you take for granted, something, you know?
Commissioner Moore?
Um, I was just looking at your, uh, agendas at Oak Hill and it seems like recently you guys have a lot of growth. A lot of new buildings, a lot of new developments coming. Um, and so what was your experience as far as planning and, you know, the planning field? We have a contracted planner, but it's still something that the city manager needs to know about, like all these maps on the wall behind you. Kind of what those, those colors mean and stuff. Do you have experience with that?
I did not until I got to Oak Hill. Um, I learned a bit, but we also had a contract, uh, from that data planning force. So I was able to sit with them and learn as, uh, as I went along. So it's still not, I still wouldn't call myself a planner by any stretch of the imagination. But I have learned a lot, more so than I did when I just started.
Commissioner Beattie? Great. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Um, what would be, um, your first steps on becoming city manager here? What would you plan to accomplish or how would you spend most of your time in the first ninety days?
In the first ninety days is actually getting to know the staff, getting to know what staff is working on, um, what processes they've been finding steps on, and actually meeting with the commission. And actually, we need to go to the commission to get there, there, you know, what, what are the commission's priorities, um, timeframes? And see how this weekend will allow to get those accomplished, the timeframe that you desire.
He did, Commissioner Vito? That's good, thank you very much. Um, and, and coming from Sebastian, I'm gonna, I know you driving back and forth to Oak Hill, that was, now we have to ride each way. But you have an opportunity to plan your day and shut day down. Um, what are your thoughts about relocating to, to this area? And then you've obviously applied for this position here in Crescent City, but um, what are your thoughts about being able to relocate here? And how quickly do you think you could do that?
Yeah, that's, that is something that I would definitely give it a go, because two and a half hours back and forth.
Well, you have, and with family too.
Yeah, uh, wouldn't be something that I'd want to do on a daily basis. So I would definitely initially be looking for somewhere to rent, just so I can be in the area, uh, to make sure. It's a good fit for both of us. Make sure I'm comfortable here, you're comfortable with me, and when everything is, seems like it's good, then relocate, relocate in time. To the issue would just be myself, I'm not coming here. Um, as far as timeframe, a month or two, just so I, cause I'm not committed to the, the, you know, the housing situation here. So, just to give myself some time to see what's available, what, what costs are.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burton? Um, hopefully your microphone's still on, sorry, Commissioner Burton just said that you have a question. Thank you.
Have you been involved in zoning at all, in uh, in Oak Hill, any of the areas that you've worked in?
The staff, um, like I said, we do have that, that firm that does the, the perk, the planning for us. But as far as uh, when the developers bring their, their application in, uh, you know, person that have, would have to take the application. Uh, go through it to make sure everything that we are required is there before sending it on to the planners to be reviewed to cover it in what are the fees that needs to connect. Uh, I think I would have a meeting with, uh, not only the planners, but our building official, uh, someone from the county, the uh, the fire marshal, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and everything is being done the way it should be or anything is needed. And then we'd also be contacted with the developers to say, yeah, this is what's needed or if it was good, this is the next step.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a question just a little bit. Um, uh, can you tell us sort of the skills and experiences that you have that will make you successful for this job?
Uh, I consider myself to be very organized, uh, and delectative. I like to plan things before I actually move into that, I'm not one to just jump and do something. I like to plan it all, you know, what I'm doing, what my steps are, what resources I'm going to be needing. Uh, so in that sense, I, I think that's, that's one of my strong suits. Um, I like to know what's happening, so I can keep in regular contact with staff, just so I know where they are. If they need help from you, if other people are, you know, using data, we have resources for them. Uh, yeah, that's, I, I, open communication, because that's always a, a key, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Commissioner Warren?
Um, I would just like to know, how, how did you grow a whole city with six people?
I know, I haven't, I haven't been, I haven't been at Oak Hill with.
Uh, it's uh, I mean, we had a website, you definitely set up, I just set up the website called The Minutes and the Agendas and stuff, called Sharepoint. Yeah, it was very classy, very slick. So obviously you have a technology background, which you can use.
I think that's been the foundation, background, the idea for um.
They worked it out, I can tell, so, um, you, I don't feel you guys didn't have utilities though, at all. So you have that experience of running utilities?
No, we, we, we're a business district, it comes.
And, and we do work a lot with the county as well, sometimes. Like our private building department is, all our building inspections are pretty busy with the county. And then we do our planning, you know, our contracts, so it's, sometimes it's generally kind of, you know, putting together on the same thing, which I'm the same age. But um, do you have, is there any particular successes that you had in Oak Hill that you think show how great of a city manager you are? Something like that? Is there anything particular that you did during the last, that year that you were really proud of?
Uh, when I started there, the previous city manager and clerk had left like six months prior. And there was only the admin assistant in the office. So as far as uh the books were concerned, the finances, it was not good.
Yeah.
Um, she was just writing checks and, you know, paying bills, whatever. So, I think what I did was something good for them. I actually got a third-party company to contain, to tape over our books, to bring them up, to make, make sure they got reconciled. We couldn't even get a report to see how much money we had spent and how much was left. So I did that, and that, I think, was one of the big, big things for us, so that they could see where they stood financially. Um, other things, because of the size of the city that the staff did, it's just the day-to-day stuff that I was doing. So being able to work with companies, get new playground equipment for our park, get locks to our doors. At times, it was just pretty much day-to-day running the, running the, the operations. Uh, you couldn't get too much into large projects because people just didn't have the staff that were good at accomplishing it. Uh, they did have a, uh, a second to sewer conversion going on when I got there. And I was able to work with the county and the state, they had, they had received a grant to get that service section of the city put onto those sewers. And I was able to work with them to get that completed, uh, work with the state, we got more monies so we could actually give to the residents to assist in, kind of, uh, to solicit, to solicit.
And there's a lot, you would be doing a lot of getting the block some things here. You're taking, you know, it's everything from the big, the big picture to the small picture. So, we might not be your staff, but it's still, your hands are in everything, so.
That's, that's what I meant when I said that you, at Oak Hill, because Oak Hill's not very big, it's not a very big community. So I, I can understand that you're not in such a small town. Commissioner Vito?
Great, thank, uh, thank you so much. Um, so, and it's okay if you uh don't, but I am, because obviously you are good at learning things. Um, do you have experience in writing RFPs and other bid documents and, um, I assume managing contracts? I mean, do you act, have you actually written our requests or proposals?
Yes, I have, like, I should have written, uh, a couple, I've written one for, uh, actually went to an R P for a bank.
For what?
A bank, a new bank for, for the city. Uh, so that one, um, that was still out when I, I departed. Um, okay, I'm gonna do the other one, I think, I, I have done, I have done.
And contract management, have you done contract management?
Uh, uh, I would say exactly. Um, I've had contracts that were in place that I had to, you know, negotiate with, uh, like state agencies or, or a vendor or something like that. I'm not sure that's exactly what you're asking.
Yeah, sure. Um, my question is, I, I take it that, you know, based on your, on your application, on your resume, you departed Oak Hill in November, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay, was that under your terms, or, I mean, is that?
Uh, with the new commission, I think, then I decided to move to the American.
Okay, and that happened, and that does happen, but especially in this, in this realm that you, that you have been worked on, you know? And it's, and we have to understand that, that it's just a whole different, you know, you get a new commission. Um, and so that's something that, you know, um, thankfully right now, we've worked pretty set, we're pretty set for a little while.
You're right, we just had our election.
We just had our election, but it can do, it can do, I, um, it can change things a little bit when new commissioners come in with different ideas and, and they want something different. Yeah, that's it, thank you for your honesty.
I got to, to, to take part in my first elections. Like I said, every day gets all that, that was interesting, uh, definitely, you know, a learning curve involved. It was interesting to get to see that part of government, not just.
Yeah, it is, it always is. And you sat on this side too, so you understand, you understand.
I've seen it from both sides.
You've seen, you've seen it from both sides, a lot of people did that perspective, and so that's, that's, um, that's a valid quality that you have brought to, wherever, wherever you come, you know, wherever you're at, so. With that, I'm gonna go back down to Commissioner Burton.
I'm good.
You good?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Commissioner Warren?
Um, I would just like you to tell us, what do you think of Crescent City, about the city of? What are your impressions, where do you think we're going?
I see the development that's possible. Uh, the plans that you have, that you're, probably, I'm the very, too, I'm just kind of forward to make the city that much better than it is. It's, looks pretty good, I'm really, oh, I just, yeah, keep saying that, I guess it really impressed me that way.
I'm glad, I'm glad.
We like that, yeah.
Yeah, we all like that. When I, I, I first heard Crescent City, I mean, coming to Crescent City, it's a small town, and I'm like, okay, it's not gonna make it that perfect. It actually looks very good. Uh, it's very impressive, and again, it's because you have your own utilities, not something you see everywhere. So it's interesting that you're such a small city, but you still are to provide such good services. So, to be a part of that would be, would be quite interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner Vito?
Sure, um, just one more question, a little bit about track round. So you had, um, Oak Hill had six employees. And in your career, um, had you ever had, what is the largest number of employees you've had under your, um, scope of responsibility? And would, you know, do you feel that you would be comfortable managing, um, twenty-plus employees at Crescent City?
The most number of employees I've had under me was seventeen.
Okay.
Um, again, in the IT field, when I worked presenting, I was the, uh, the network operations coordinator, I had seventeen. People were putting me in three different sections, the health, the network guys, and systems, and telecom team. Uh, I'd worked directly with the C I O in preparing, uh, courses, easy plan, uh, doing budgets, uh, organizing any, any like, uh, projects that we might have, so I'm comfortable working with a large group. Uh, I'm comfortable working with a deep, uh, various backgrounds and, uh, various levels, perhaps, which I'm not quite aware of.
Great, thank you, Dr. Burton, very specific and very helpful, thank you.
Um, I don't have, I don't have any questions, I didn't get answered anything that I had. Um, so I'm gonna, you can put us on the hot seat now, and so are there any questions that you have of the commission?
Um, typical, what would be, what are your expectations of the person you bring on as city manager for the first ninety days?
Commissioner, I'll try, Commissioner Warren? Well, I think the first expectation that I've got is for you to come on in, um, see who your staff really is, learn your staff. Uh, and then, of course, you'll get to know your commissioners, which you will very quickly get to know the commissioners, because that's just who they are. And, uh, and then from, from there, okay, we'll, we'll give you, we'll give you three days, you know, to, to kind of settle in. And, um, but, but that I know will be kind of the first, first step, uh, to just kind of get to know what's going on, kind of catch up with everything that you all need to know, kind of step in the city forward, so.
Commissioner Warren? You'll be there?
I, I would echo most of what Commissioner Burton said, I mean, you gotta get to know your staff. You know, you see them every day, you see us every, you know, week or so, maybe, banana out on, on some of us. But, um, you don't get emails from all of us, phone calls, but, you know, it's the citizens that you're seeing every day and the staff that, you know, you get to, you need to get to know, get to figure out everyone's, you know, how everyone works, kind of the management style. Their, their work style and your management style, so it's getting familiar with everybody and figuring out what's going on. And we'll each sit there for a few hours and tell you what we think is right, but you've got to take all that and then kind of make it happen. Or make it, figure out what's, to listen to, what to actually do, so. It's, uh, we, we like to talk a lot, so.
Commissioner Vito, he speaks for not a value, it's um, right, okay. Um, well, um, I would say in addition to getting to know everyone, um, I see that you're a member of Florida City County Manager Association and the Florida Association of City Clerks. Since you function as clerk, uh, which is very admirable and helpful. Um, I guess it would be important to me that you would follow the code of ethics of the, um, I guess it's the International City County Manager Association. Um, and do your best to give us, um, all the information, the correct information to supply the commission with the information that we need to do our jobs and to always be, you know, honest, straightforward, and trustworthy, that we can rely on the information um, that you would provide to us and be as complete as possible. Um, and in addition to getting to know us.
Um, probably what I would be looking for is, I'm looking for stability and, and for a bit of that. And knowing that someone is coming in, willing to work with our staff, get to know our staff. Um, and, and get comfortable, get comfortable in that position. Um, at the same time, keeping, keeping the city going, I mean, that's, that to me is, is extremely important. There's a lot of hats that you wear, um, as you know, for being in Oak Hill and a small town. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it can be a benefit and also be a curse because certain things, you know, you're trying to juggle, like you said yesterday, there's a lot of plates in the air all the time. And, um, being able to juggle those plates and multitask. Um, and that will be very important to me, is the builder to be able to multitask also. Because it is, you're gonna be hit, and it's just part of, it's just part of the job, but you also garner this amount, um, in doing so, so. Do you have any other questions or us?
As far as, um, the, the residents within the city, are they involved in the council meetings? Are they?
Well, let's start with Commissioner Vito.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to.
Sure, okay, um, so you want to know what level of involvement?
Yes.
Do the residents of our community have? Um, I would say that, um, it's very mixed. We have a lot of people who we really don't hear from unless there's a problem. Um, who don't necessarily come to the meetings or belong to a community group. So, we kind of have, um, you know, what they used to call the, kind of the silent majority, that some people are just, um, we don't hear from them unless there's a problem. But we have a smaller group of people, um, much smaller, who are very active in community affairs and groups and who volunteer and who do come to meetings. Um, we have people serving on our, um, planning and zoning commission. And, um, we have a tree board. Um, and it's, you know, we don't always have a multiplicity of people applying for those positions, but we've been able to fill them. So I would say, um, we have quite a few people who put in a lot of time trying to make the city better, but it's, it's a sub-group. So, I hope that's helpful.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Um, I would agree with Commissioner Vito, I mean, you saw who was here last night, some of them are here right now. Some of them didn't want to get up that early this morning, um, but, you know, we do have. Some of them are here right now, some of them didn't want to get up that early this morning, um, but, you know, we do have our regulars that you would see at every meeting, um, and they keep an eye out for things now, so, you know, keep everybody else informed, so. You have a lot of people that do care and, like, like you said, there aren't some that you just won't hear anything from unless there's a problem. But when there's a problem, they're gonna trick us or they can trick to you, so you will hear from them. So it's best just to be prepared for that or make sure everything keep working, yes.
Commissioner Berg?
I guess it wouldn't, I'm not saying it, but I am newly elected, so. So there's a lot that I'm still learning as well, so, um, I'll hear a couple, some more things later. I can't get myself together here. Thank you. Just keep in mind too, um, we also Zoom, our meetings on, uh, YouTube, you know, it's in, you know, they're, they're Zoom live. So there are people that actually watch, you know, Zoom.
Do you have interaction with the people on Zoom? That's interesting.
No, no, well, we do have some issues right now, technical issues, I think, you know, a lot of people complain that they can't really hear us and. So, so there's some things that we, that we need to kind of update, I think, along the way here this year, hopefully. But, but there are people on Zoom that, that definitely get on Zoom, watch us and, uh, you know, I hear from those people quite a bit, so there you go.
And that's, um, and, and all of that, a lot of that happened during COVID.
Okay.
Being able to, and we did, we did have interaction during that time, we offered that opportunity, um. During that time, some of us came in during COVID, you know, so, and that was, that was a challenge too. Um, we do offer that, it is a, um, and we don't have to have, we don't have to do that. We just feel that that just keeps everything transparent, gives people an opportunity, we have an older population here too. That sometimes, especially when the time changes, they want to know what's going on, they're not, um, it's not that they're not involved, it's just driving after dark. Um, is, is, is difficult, and so that provides them an opportunity to, um, to, to be aware of what's going on in the city. Um, it also provides, um, us and others an opportunity to view from the past, you know, how do we handle things, um, you know. What do we say here, what do we do here? So, um, I think that's been a benefit and that's why, you know, we've just continued that forward, um, in keeping that there, um. But, yeah, but it, it is, so we do, while you see, um, you know, a lot of, oftentimes, our usual, um, audience bases, familiar faces, there's faces out there that are watching us, um, surprising. We all have people that I run into in my Dixie, and I mean, I saw what y'all, you know, what y'all did and what you said and, and how's this gonna happen and I'm like, wow, you know, they are watching. Um, so they are engaged, so the community, so, you know, that wants to be engaged, they have that opportunity to be as engaged as they would like to be.
Those are the people that usually you meet in my Dixie.
Yes. Yeah, don't ever think you can go to my Dixie and just get your ice cream or ice cream. Or your sour cream, or their sour cream, as, yeah, or their ice cream blast, yeah. So.
With a token, that's something I brought to them to, I was able to get their readings, uh, live streamed on YouTube for them also. They're still just viewing, uh, no interaction that they had before.
Yeah.
So when people wanted to see something from three months, they have to call, you'd have to download it, et cetera, now they can just go on YouTube.
They go on YouTube, everything is out there, yeah, yeah.
One, one other quick question, as far as, uh, what's the relationship of the, the commission here with the county?
For the county?
Yeah, with their.
Um, I mean, you should ask.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have an, we have an interlocal agreement on certain things that spouts their obligations for, like, animal control is done by, is carried out by the county. Um, we'd like to add a little bit more of that than they provide, but, um, a lot of the county recreation stuff, they, they cover a lot of recreation services, um, like. So we, we work with them and we, we, we have a new commissioner, several new commissioners just seated. And I think our relationship with the county has improved after this, uh, or at this time, because we have pretty commissioner representative, so. It's, uh, it's, uh, anybody else want to add to that?
Well, I think our face really has been, um, Mayor Myers primarily with the commission. Um, she's kind of our face, uh, for the commission, for, uh, Platten County, um, tourism, uh, the check, the chamber. She, she's the one that really kind of represents us as a commission, does a pretty good job, by the way, Bill.
Thank you, thank you.
And tries, tries to bring everything back and, uh, sometimes when you're talking about county commission, it can be somewhat confusing. Uh, just because of some of the different things that we are discussing is, uh, Commissioner Ward, he says, you know, the animal control and all the different things that, uh, that we get. You know, kind of updating in, in Platten County along with the city as well, so, yeah, it's been a good thing. We, we get on pretty well.
Commissioner Vito?
Sure, that is an excellent question. Um, we're a small county, so, um, we tend to know each other. I mean, people, even, we live in the southern part, southeast part of the county, um, we tend to know who our county commissioners are and know some or all of them personally. And they know most of us, probably. Um, we've always had a good relationship with the commissioner in South County. Um, it just changed, I think that's gonna continue. Um, we're also a poor county. And so we do have an interlocal agreement with the county, um, for certain services and responsibilities. Um, the county is not always able to do as much as we would like and, um, there, there are areas that maybe sometimes, um, we would hope the county would take care of, but sometimes that falls back on us. Um, just because of the lack of resources, I mean, we're, we're officially a disadvantaged area. Um, but I would say, um, the relationship is good and the communication is good. But it is something that we have to keep on top of, um, just to make sure, um, that we're, we're getting the services that we need and that they, you know, know what our needs are.
Um, I can, I can probably expand on that a little bit, so, uh, we have worked really hard, I believe, in, in making sure that, that our voice is heard and, you know, not blacked. That's where our county's key is, I think we learned that yesterday. Um, and so that they don't forget that once, you know, that bridge, that's create, that the county doesn't stop there. Um, and I feel like our, our previous county commissioner, he was born and raised here and, um, he, um, really, uh, worked hard to make sure that we got representation that possibly we hadn't been getting in the past. And I knew when I came on, that was, that was a big, um, issue for me too, and I sit on several boards with, with the county. Um, and so I'm constantly saying, wait a second, what about South Platten? You know, don't forget about us. Um, I will say that Crescent City is represented and has been invited, um, to sit at, at quite a few tables there. And, um, so I think that, that we've really worked hard, this commission, um, has worked really hard to try to build those relationships with the county. As the late, you know, there's, there's, you know, conflicts that we, you know, try to get through. I know animal, animal control right now is a big issue for us. Um, and we're trying to work through them with it, but they usually are very, um, responsive. And I know during our emergency, um, when we have an emergency, when we're in an emergency situation here, we have, um, a top-notch, um, emergency management portion in the county. And they work with all municipalities and they make sure that we're taken care of. If we have need, they get down here. I mean, just like with the generator situation this last time, all we had to do was reach out and say, hey, we need a generator, I believe, two were down here at life long this community. Um, so, so in that regard, I think that, you know, we've gotten some, some strong voices. We have a new, uh, county commissioner who is also from this area and thankfully, he's well-known across the county. Um, and very respected, and so he, like Commissioner Ward, they're just getting their feet wet and kind of learning their, you know, their boundaries and what they can and, you know, what we need and what we don't need, but he, I think, will be a, a, a strong advocate for this area. He'll be very forward to working with them as well. Anything else?
Oh, that was it?
You good? Well, thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything?
No, I have.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming here and, um, and, and wanting to be part of Crescent City.
Yes, thank you for giving the opportunity to, to be part of, so you're an appreciator.
Okay. I think George, do you and Jim want to, um, we're gonna take a recess, uh, just, uh. You want to sit back there?
Mayor, I have a very key question. Uh, really, have we given the candidates an expectation of where?
Um, no, I, I think Jim and George have been talking to them, um, as our senior advisors, we've been talking to them. I think, I know one has left. Um, has anybody?
I think a couple have left, but, um, I guess their, their expectation is that you will, we decide who you want to make an offer to today. Uh, but, um, I don't think it's necessary for them to stay for that.
Okay, they keep, they would like that.
It would be appropriate after you're through for the staff to call them and let them know what, what you did.
Okay, well, we can do that.
Yeah.
I think we need a break, I, I would think.
So you want me to just, I can bring some, we, I can, with Melanie in here, we can bring some.
So we need to pick the table up and bring it out here. I've ever gone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um. Do we, um, get to ask any questions of these guys or?
Yes.
Can we offer our, what we, we think is the best candidate for the position at this point?
Yes.
Otherwise, how have you, how do you survey the people that were here last night and the people that are here today and the others that may want to say? Just based on wherever they gathered their information in person or online, would think this would be the.
And that commission, um, typically, this is a decision that we, that we make, um, I'm gonna leave that up to the commissioners. So commissioners, what do you want to, would like to do?
Well, my suggestion might be before we take a break, then, is to allow public comment of about two minutes. These people have sat here all morning, and if they have a comment and want to give it public, I think we should let them. If they prefer to keep with us, start a break individually, that's fine too.
So, is, commissioners, are you, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll go ahead, and so if you, if you would like, um, please come forward, state your name and your, um, address, if you will. And normally I'll do, it's only set for three minutes, but. Well, I'm just.
No, uh, I won't be three minutes.
Okay.
Michael Frank, eighty-three Lakeshore Drive. And I think he did a good job of getting the candidates here and selecting the candidates. There's two that are pretty neck and neck, but there's one I think that stands out above the rest of them, and that's Dwayne Flowers. He has that small-town experience. I love his work ethic. And he's committed to building that community. He's a family man. And the thing that impressed me too last night, his wife was here, and that's showing support to his spouse, and we all know that's very important in one's home life. She's very excited about the prospects of Crescent City, so I would say I would recommend it to the city. And also we had a tremendously good vibe just talking to him, and even today it was on display, very relaxed, low-key. So I would say my recommendation to the commission is to make him offer good wings for ours.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Do we have anybody else that would like to, with Diane?
I always am.
I know, come on, Diane.
I'll be, how many of you are going to be not having a opinion?
You said that, not.
I said, I did. Sorry, Diane, um, you said, that's my thing.
No, I just, you said it.
Um, I, I believe that our, our consultants did a really good job in their selection of candidates. And you guys have a really tough decision to make, um, uh, but I do agree with Mr. Frank said, um, Dwayne Flowers was above and beyond with his experience and his personality, which personality's a big part of this job. There can be, you can have the experience, but if you don't have the personality to get along with people, you're not gonna be successful in our small town.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else? This is your opportunity.
I mean, at least come up and tell us, you know, whether you're hopeful or not.
Right, I have received emails from several members over there last night that also liked him.
Okay, good. This Liz?
Yeah, it's, yeah, right.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Hi, hi friends. I'm Liz Carter at Two Hundred Central. Um, I concur with, uh, both Ms. Diane and Mr. Frank. I actually really wanted to get here last night, but the dance coincided, the, the dance class coincided with the reception. Um, I did, on my way home, uh, yesterday, I saw Mr. Flowers stopping people and shaking hands with them. And I almost made a turn and that would have been completely illegal or. I just stopped myself and I said, you know what? God's got this, but I, uh, yeah, I just haven't put my two cents in.
No, thank you, and thank you for being here for that.
Oh, I appreciate it. You guys are doing such an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Hey, anybody else? Mr. Newbold, I, I know you sounded like you wanted to, uh, to, to say something.
I'm, I'm John Newbold, and I live at five, six, six, oh, probably seventeen, um. You guys have a lot more experience in dealing with this than I do. I do have an opinion, but I'm not gonna voice it here. I think you have a great slate of candidates. I think each one of them have great qualities. And I know you're gonna make a good decision.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, John. Okay, I think we've pretty much, um, Mr. Dodge, you good? Come on, you might as well.
I'll join in, thank you.
Enjoy it. And, and while he's here, I do want to say this, Mr. Dodge made this recommendation and, and, um, I think it was a great recommendation the other night, and I'm gonna reach out. Um, as soon as we get through this, that we, um, have a commissioner base acknowledged by the county. You know, shame on you that I haven't already done that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention and also to the governor. Um, maybe they can do, um, he can do, uh, something as well, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to point out, but I think this chair needs to be adjusted. Because what happens when a candidate sits in at some room, their back, their back from the edge of the mic, three feet, so it's harder to hear. Uh, so I think if the back is adjusted, be more forward, it might help. They look very comfortable, but it's hard for us to hear. Uh, so, so given that, my first, uh, uh, recommendation is Carl Brown. I found that he was highly intelligent, well-educated, well-diverse. I was very impressed that, uh, um, with his energy and I, I believe that, uh, he, uh, I was impressed with his accounting background, his financial investment background, and highly impressed with his grant-writing ability. Uh, which is so important, particularly to a small community, uh, like us. Uh, the second choice, um, was more difficult for me, uh, but I, I agree that, uh, Mr. Flowers, uh, is a strong candidate. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear all that he had to say. Uh, but, uh, in meeting him last. But in meeting him last night, he and his wife, um, I found them very pleasant. And Mr. Adams is, is also of, of interest in the second position as well. Unfortunately, I, I had to run home and miss the first part of his presentation. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. I think that's everybody. Is there anybody else that wants to speak at this time? If not, I'm gonna do a 30-minute recess.
Okay. And we can be our special meeting at this time. Thank you, everyone, for being here today and for enduring this. I know it started early this morning. Many of us were up very early this morning. Could have happened to get into probably. Get the day started, get the day started. With that, I'm probably going to go ahead at this time, commissioners, and turn it back over to Jim George. So.
Sorry.
I know, Jim George.
Jim George.
Sounds like a connection.
Yeah, we've been doing this together for a few years. Well, it's a few.
I have a question. Not everybody here, if Jim could just briefly say who they are, because some people, I think, don't know that they're volunteers from the League of Cities.
Okay. All right. We are, George Forbes and I, are senior advisors for the Florida City Manager Association and the Inaction City Manager Association. We are both retired managers, both with about 41 years' experience in various cities. We volunteer to help out. We don't get paid. Sometimes we get a registration con to the conference or something like that, but that's about it. But we do a number of things. Assist managers that have just been fired. We help mentor new managers. But one other thing is to help the smallest cities and counties who can't, normally, afford a executive search for them when they're searching for a professional manager. Obviously, in our whole career, we supported professional management and sort of take it personally if we can help cities and counties to get professional managers and make life better for everybody. So we've helped quite a number of cities and a couple small counties over the years. But, and I hope we have done some service to you. Sounds like you've gone through your interviews and all the other steps of this process. I guess there's a couple steps left. Obviously, it's time for you to make a decision on who you want to be your next city manager. Oftentimes, we recommend that as a council, consider a second choice in case you can't reach an agreement with the first choice. Sometimes the first choice will say, I want more salary than what you guys posted. So it's often good to do that. Normally, a elected body would offer somebody to negotiate a contract with your manager. Most managers have contracts for, because they're different regular employees. Obviously, those normally include severance provisions if they're fired just because you have nothing done by then, but if you have a council. Normally, a body would designate their mayor or chairman and their county commission as well as their attorney to negotiate the contract. We have in our search guide a draft contract that includes wording on just about all the provisions you would want to have in a manager's contract, and it is in Word format, so it's really easy for your attorney to use. So while you're negotiating that, we always recommend that you get a detailed background investigation on certainly your first choice. Because, and we're talking, and there is, by the way, a document also in that search guide detailing all the pieces of that document. But for example, you want to verify their education. You want to do a criminal background check. It depends on how often you can get the information. Of course, do a deep dive on Google check to see what's in there, you know, financial background, all those sort of things to make sure, you know, that everything's correct. So with that, and then, of course, that contract negotiation is subject to your commission approval before it becomes final, but somebody's got to deal with candidates. With that, I think you're coming in at the end of the process, and I think you've got some good candidates and would like to help any way we can.
Okay, thank you. We have, I know we have one candidate, Mr. Flowers is still here. He is in the audience. And Commissioner, if you're okay with that, I mean, he can watch it on Zoom. He can watch it here in person instead of our, if you are okay for our discussion as long as he's okay with our discussion.
I don't think we can actually ask anybody.
We can, we can. I just wanted to make that, you know, aware that in case anybody asks about that, so.
I mean, that's the sunshine one.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, but for everybody.
For everybody. Because during the interview process, they were sitting there with their own sets. Now we're open. I'm going to open it up for some discussion. We've gotten four great applicants. I'm very excited about this. For many of us, this is, I know just in my four-year tenure, I've had two city managers and two interim managers. So we've been through this a little bit. And Commissioner DeVito, you have gone through it since 2018. And you had two additional ones there, so you've gone through it six times. And I was included in one of those, so I remember that very clearly. So with that, I'm just going to open it up for discussion, if anybody wants to start.
Do I all jump in here? Okay.
Commissioner DeVito, did you opt to speak?
Okay, sure. Just, I want to say a couple things. Number one, I appreciate everybody from the public who has come last night and today. I think we've gotten a lot of good input. And as well, I think it's just a lot of real support, and it helps us. I think when we're interviewing applicants, that they know the community is interested. And just thank you for your time. Secondly, I think the process went well, and I've had the comment from residents that I think we have a hard decision. I think we've got a very good pool of applicants. I think we need to figure out how we're going to make the selection. We didn't really, we didn't talk about that before. But the other thing I want to say is I appreciate each and every one of you. I think we've worked together really well today. And the four good candidates, they asked great questions, and I hope we do this again. Because of their questions, I think, a lot of us, we've had some, shared some very good information about our goals and objectives and what's important to us. And I hope that we do this again, even when we're not selecting applicants.
I'm glad you're saying that, because I don't like that.
I don't want to go through this again.
Let's have some clarity there, Commissioner DeVito. We definitely don't do this.
Saying not outside of selecting an applicant, I hope that we undertake this kind of exchange again when we're setting our plans. So really, my first question is, I think we have very good choices. And just, you know, how do we want to go about this? Do we want to say what attributes we think are good? Do we want to say who our first or second choices are? Or do we want to have a ballot and then talk about that?
I'm going to ask, again, we're asking our senior advisors, just to make sure that we're, you know, we all have our different preferences, how we'd like to do this, but kind of based on your experience, how you.
The simplest thing to do is just have somebody make a motion. And see if you can enough votes to support that. You can do more, but I suspect most of you have your minds made up at this point anyway.
No. No, exactly. You know, and I, you know, so let's have some discussion. I mean, if we, Commissioner DeVito, Commissioner Burton, do you have anything that you want to add or that stood out to you?
I think what we have options is to say, you know, we're five people here, and just for all of our knowledge, you know, we've talked to four very good candidates. But each and every one of us, we all know that we have something probably very specific that's near and dear to our heart that we would like to accomplish here in the city. And what is that? And maybe we can take what we learned from each one of these people and see if that applies to where we want to go with the city. Does that make some sense?
Well, I have a little bit different take on it, and Commissioner Laurie sounds like, he does as well. Aside from the specific things that we each want to accomplish, I'm hoping that we will hire a candidate who has the best ability to do the job, to, as the mayor said, keep the city running, and also bring whatever strengths and talents they have there to keep the city going. I see distinct talents and abilities in each of these candidates that are a little bit different. And I think, you know, we can't roll the ball into one, so we have to choose one. But I do think it's very important, you know, that we look at someone who can really do the job, who can best do the overall job to keep the city functioning.
I think it's our purpose, so are we going to do this with a silent vote? Or are we going to do this right up front?
I think we can, maybe Commissioner Laurie can do that.
A personal privilege. Can you, we can turn on your pressure.
You're warm.
Yes, I'm very warm.
So I'll ask. I'm proud of us.
Sorry, but I can also make a motion if you'd like to involve me.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to, if you want to make a motion.
I think I'd like to move that we offer the position to Dwayne Flowers with the stipulation that the background check needs to be done and subject to contract negotiation.
Okay, we have a proper motion, and we have a second. Then we can go into discussion.
For purposes, I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay, so let's have some discussion. So what are we, do we have these?
Well, I think Mr. Flowers obviously is doing almost the same job right now in Georgia. I think that several members of the public talk to him. Everybody likes his value. They like his approachfulness. I found him very easy to talk to, and he definitely has the skill set to step right in, start from day one, knowing what's going on. So I'd like that.
I can add this, and that Mr. Flowers, out of all the applicants, he did his research, no doubt. He reached out to former members, I mean, former leaders here in the community. He asked and sent in a lot of requests so that he had the proper documentation so that he was prepared for this. And so having, and I do tend to work very closely with the city manager, as we all do, and find that it's important that someone, and that's the one thing about Michael, I think we've been very blessed, is that his background, his experience, his knowledge, he has been able to be action-oriented and hit the ground running. And he's done a lot of things that he did not have to do as an interim. That's really what I'm looking for, is someone that can come in here and hit the ground running and keep us upright and still be, have that personal, I like that he was personable, and I think right now our staff, we have some, I mean, let's be honest, we do have some moral issues right now because there's so many uncertainties. And so we need somebody that also, that can pull our staff back together and say, you know, you're valued, you're here, I see you, I want to work with you, and I want you to be the best that you can possibly be. And after looking at all the applicants, and after having an opportunity to talk to them all on an individual basis, I truly feel like Mr. Flowers, he is, he brings that skill set. So that's my take on it. You have anything else? Does anybody, Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Burton?
No.
Okay.
I did the second, but I do have a comment.
Okay.
So I was very impressed with Mr. Flowers. I think Commissioner Laurie is absolutely right. He's doing pretty much, he's doing the job that we need to have done. And I agree with you. I think he has a very good approach to dealing with people. I also was very impressed with Mr. Carl Brown and a couple of residents, when they gave their preferences, noted that he is very knowledgeable about budgeting. He's never done this exact job before, but he seems to have a lot of talent. And he's kind of what you call a non-traditional applicant. But he has a lot of talent, and I like the way that he, also, he has, in his master's degree, he has concentration or landing, which I thought, oh, my goodness. And I liked his creative attitude and his ability to weigh pros and cons. He talked to us a lot about that, well, he could do this, but then you have to think about the flip side. What would the effects be? And how do you, how do you bring all the pros and cons together? So he had a lot of talent, but he's never done this before. So as much as I would like to take advantage of that talent and give a kind of new person a chance, I think the more sure bet is Mr. Flowers.
And Mr. Brown was also probably, he'd probably be my second choice, and then we're going to have to make a second choice.
Exactly.
He would be my second choice, but he doesn't, while he brings, he brings the finance aspect that we need desperately, but nuts and bolts, he doesn't. And so he'd have a learning curve there that we would have to understand. And right now, I just don't, I just.
But I do agree, I'm very impressed. The motion is for Flowers, you have correct.
Right, yeah.
And now we're off on Brown?
No, she was just saying, or she was discussing her choices, what she was thinking about the applicants, for the applicants.
Okay, so motion is whether or not, what is the motion?
Well, right now, we're making this discussion, so we're having a discussion. So the motion is for Mr. Flowers. So for Mr. Flowers, and as I were having our discussions.
And so the purpose of my discussion was to say what I think basically the advantages are of that motion, and just to share with y'all how I came to my decision and what some of the considerations were. But sometimes that's helpful. Sometimes if you share what went into it, then another commissioner might have a response to that.
If you don't have anything, Ms. Moore, you still good? Commissioner Burton?
I'm fine.
Okay, this is a tough decision. Commissioner Laurie, you have something you want to add before I have a roll call?
I could want to say that, yes, this was a very tough decision. We had an amazing slate. I think we had four really unique individuals, which I was very impressed with. It was an impressive group of people on paper before coming into this and then meeting them, but they're all very impressive. I want to say that Mr. Flowers did have an extra bonus. Remember, I had his wife there last night. I think she helped charm us as well. She helped a lot, so that was a smart move.
And I agree. I think out of the years that we've done this, this is probably one of our strongest sites of candidates. With that, if we're ready, I'm going to go ahead and, Melanie, you'll do a roll call. And commissioners, please keep in mind, this is for our top choice. And then we will have to have a motion for a second candidate if we so desire. So Melanie, I think you'll do a roll call for us, please. The current motion is to offer the position based on the background check, and of course, we'll have contract negotiations with Mr. Flowers.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito? Or I'm sorry, apologies.
Commissioner Burton?
I know, I was trying to follow you, you got two more here.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
So be it. Mr. Flowers? Thank you. We thank both you and Ms. Ashley for your willingness to invest in our community and to be part of this. We welcome you with open arms as we go forward. Please keep in mind, there will be a very thorough, you know, a background check. We've already done the law enforcement side. Of course, with your background, I'm sure that that was kind of a no brainer for us. But you never know, we want those surprises. If you feel there might be some surprises, please make sure Sheila, you know, with Sheila, that you keep that in mind. And then we'll go through the contract negotiations. Yes.
For the purposes of minutes, I'd like to know clarification. Did that motion anticipate then that the mayor and city attorney would be negotiating?
We had a second motion. That'll be a second motion, yes.
And Mayor, I do have a question. Okay, it's my recollection that we asked Ms. Walker to inquire of all the candidates whether they were willing to work with our salary range.
She did.
And she did, and that was confirmed.
The only one that was not, that wanted to know if we were negotiable, was the gentleman who declined his interview.
Okay, so that's not an issue. And then the other thing is, since we discussed that with him two nights ago at the regular commission meeting, Mr. Holmes agreed that he would negotiate for us. It's my understanding, based on the last fourside check, that if we delegate something like this to a member of the commission, that those meetings are open, that it has to be a staff member. So my feeling was, I would make a motion that we allow Mr. Holmes to negotiate for us. That would have been the guidelines.
So you have, so that's the motion you're making, correct?
Yes.
Is that just Mr. Holmes to negotiate that? Because there's one from the mayor as well.
Right, but I just, I think...
So I just want to make sure your motion.
Yes.
So it's just, just...
Right, and it would be implementing our decision.
Okay.
And that's, and goodness knows, Dawn, having had the experience as the city manager and an attorney, he absolutely, you know, is more than capable or than qualified to do that. That's fine, that's, I'm fine with that. And so...
Second.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second, okay? We have a discussion on that.
No.
Okay. Melanie, you'll do a roll call for us, please.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
I'm sure you said name.
That's a pleasure. You gotta read the room so kind, you know, you gotta read the room. And obviously, there are concerns that I, you know, and that's fine, and that's fine. If you want to, I'd like a motion for a second candidate. If so be, if you don't feel that these candidates would meet your requirements and what you're looking for, then we can see where we go from here and then revisit this. But at this time, if you want to make a motion for a backup or our second choice, I always, that to me is that a little, it's not that they're not a good choice. It's just, in what we're looking for right now...
I'm a little hesitant.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all have a different opinion of second choice. We all agree on Mr. Flowers, and then we all like somebody else for second.
Well, let's say. If somebody wants to throw a motion out there, if they don't, if we don't get a motion, then, you know, then that's fine too. But if somebody wants to throw a motion out there and see how the commission reacts to it, that's up to you.
I'd like to make a motion to stay where we are and go for other candidates at this time.
Okay. I'm not really sure what you mean, not set a second choice?
Out of these four. Okay, here's a second choice, but not necessarily out of these four.
Okay, and...
So start over, start over if this doesn't work out. Is that right? That's your motion, okay?
Okay, well, there's pros and cons to that.
Well, I understand that.
Well, do I have a second?
Well, we don't really, we don't really need a motion to not do anything.
No, we don't, but she has a motion, she's made a motion. So if I'm going second, then her motion fails for lack of a second. So I'm going to need, I'm going to need, if I'm going to go second, then her motion will fail for lack of a second.
I do have...
I'll second that.
So you'll second that, so we can have discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner, we get it.
Well, I think that we either need to set a second choice or talk about setting a special meeting to either finalize the contract with Mr. Flowers or talk about where to go from here. There's, I thought we had a good slate of applicants, or a good slate of applicants, a very good set of applicants. I think any of them could do the job. And, you know, we have, we have to be cognizant that if for some reason things don't work out with Mr. Flowers, then we will possibly lose the interest of the remaining candidates. So, I don't know, I just, but if we feel that we cannot agree on who that would be, then we...
I just want to say something that, the reason I'm doing what I'm doing is I felt that Commissioner DeVito and Mayor Myers, you jumped the gun when you pretty much said that your second choice was going to be Carl Brown. And it was kind of out of nowhere, you know, we're supposed to be discussing Mr. Flowers. And I...
Well, Jim told, I mean, Jim told us that we needed to have a first and a second. And I think that was kind of, that, to me, I apologize for doing so. I wasn't meaning that, it was just, it was part of the open discussion.
You discussed that it's not dependent, that this is what I...
No, that was my choice. Just like that, you know, in our discussions, if we agree or disagree, then we can do that, just because that was my, that was my thinking. It doesn't mean that you could, you know?
Well, I understand, but I already know how we're going, and I just don't...
It requires three votes.
I understand that.
Well, hang on here. My purpose, as I said before, was to highlight how I made my decision, why I was going to vote for Mr. Flowers, what I liked and thought was very attractive attributes of another candidate, how it was a hard decision. If we have a motion for a backup candidate, that doesn't miss, I haven't heard what the other commissioners have to say. It does not mean that I would not consider what other commissioners have to say and what was important to them. So I was in no way saying, you know, putting a flag on the continent of Greenland or whatever it is, like that's about an LBNF. The North Pole, shall we say.
I know where that came from now.
I was talking about Arctic ice board, but anyway. So it was not meant to say this is my first and second, because we hadn't had that discussion. I was talking about the rationale for the first decision.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we, I think it's a whole separate discussion. Can we agree on a backup candidate? And if we don't want to, should we set kind of a time certain as to when this negotiation needs to be completed and when we, would we convene?
Okay, well, currently, do we have anything, Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Laurie? You have anything else you'd like to say? Because I have a motion, proper motion and a second in front of us that...
A second, yes.
I know.
So we can choose. Yeah, I mean, we're going to have to reconvene to approve this contract.
Right.
You know, assuming that he's going to take us. Are we going to be waiting until February to do that? Or are we going to have a special meeting? Because if that's the case, then we can...
Yeah, we're going to have a special meeting.
Okay, so then why don't we just, then I'm fine with not naming someone else. And if we have to, then we have to have a special meeting. Because if we have a special meeting to approve the contract, or we have a special meeting to approve or discuss moves next?
Okay.
Right?
Melanie, you'll do a roll call for us, please. And what we're voting on right now is that we're not, as Commissioner Burton said, that we not choose a second candidate at this time. And so then what we would be doing is, we're going to have to be compacting these candidates and let them know that we've made a choice and that they are no longer an applicant, no longer being considered at this time because they didn't go through. Well, that's what we're going to have to do, that we're going to have to project there. I mean, is that not correct, Jim? That unless something happens, then then we would reconvene. I just want to make sure we're all clear.
Well, based on your first motion, you're going to start trying to work out a contract with Mr. Flowers. Now, it's, depending on the timing, when that contract's ready for approval, you can either call a special meeting and put him on the agenda for your next meeting if it's in a day or two, and go right ahead with that. But that would be fine. If you can't reach an agreement, then again, the same timing issue can come up. Do you need to call a special meeting because of the timing? Or do you need to do whatever? So I'd suggest that timing be flexible. It could be they'll come to an agreement like two days before your next meeting. And it's easy to just put it on the agenda and not ask everybody on special meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we would be severely disadvantaging ourselves if we just told people they were no longer under consideration.
Well, if we make, but if we've made a choice and they...
Okay, we've made a choice.
Sometimes we've got to make those phone calls. I've always made those phone calls, and those are not easy phone calls because the next question is, well, where am I lying, huh?
Yeah, okay, I'm going to tell you, you know, if you're second, that's the way you are, second. When you're looking for something, basically.
Oh, that's not necessarily true.
Well, no, maybe not, but that was generally...
Let's not, let's not, yeah, we've done, we've done a good job so far.
The easiest thing to do would be simply tell the other three candidates, you've chosen the offer of the job going to Mr. Flowers. And unless something changes, we appreciate your...
We appreciate your, we appreciate your interest. So that's where we are with this current motion. Melanie, would you please do a roll call?
Commissioner DeVito?
Nay.
Commissioner Laurie?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Okay, so approved. And so now what we have to set is, we're going to have to determine, we've got several things that we're going to have to send to Dawn and have him start the negotiations. Mr. Grohlart...
Did you make that? Did you make that motion?
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't, okay, sorry. It's been five hours, I'm sorry.
Stay with us. I said that earlier, I said that earlier to Christine and Stephen. Oh, I'm sorry, I said, it's been a long, it's been a long day so far. One thing in talking to Mr. Grohlart is that there was a conflict in the last week in January where his current is staying. And so, but coming back into the first of February, I think he could be willing to stay until the end of February, possibly. I must speak directly, but I think right now it looks like he could possibly stay until hopefully the end of February, unless something else comes up. But he does have, so we do have, we do have a little bit of time. That allows Mr. Flowers a little bit of time also to, I think, have fairness to his community and also Dawn some time to negotiate a contract.
And my suggestion would be that the contract be negotiated as quickly as possible because Mr. Flowers can't give the list to the city until...
Exactly. Exactly. So my recommendation to the commission is, well, two things. We can either set a date certain at this time, or we can be on standby that as soon as they come to an agreement in the negotiation process, that Mr. Holmes can reach out and I can call a special meeting as soon as, as soon as it works with everybody's schedule. So those are your options, Commission.
Okay.
That's your pleasure.
My question is, does Mr. Flowers have any timeline for us that he thinks he could accomplish?
Mr. Flowers, would you like to come forward and...
And I understand he can't control attorney Holmes' schedule.
Right.
Can I ask, you cleared one of the questions? What's your timeframe?
I'm saying, how, what timeframe do you think would be needed to come to an agreement on a contract from your perspective? I know you can't control our attorney's schedule.
Sure, as soon as he sends it to me and, or I call him, whatever I want to do, we can talk through it first and kind of cut through that. So, I mean, you can get to work on it as soon as you all want to, so if you're able to.
During the interview, you said you wanted to hear your city...
At least thirty days, preferably six weeks. I'm still doing the, working with FEMA with Eileen, President Polo's assistance.
We know how that is.
Right, so that's, that's...
So we can...
I think so, at least, I think we can...
Because that can allow us to play with Michael.
Yeah. And fairness to him too, so. So March first, you think, and if something happens, of course, you know. Is there, is there anything that you, to the commission, that some concerns that she might have or anything that he feels that in relocating or...
No.
You've got a lot, you've got a lot to ponder in the next, on that ride, that five dollar ride. Especially, I'll be offering tickets to the Masters.
I have to say, oh man, I used to watch the day, our day to the Masters was the same day as the Catfish Show, so. They sell pretty good though, so. Not really, again, those are the things, I told you my concerns about your residency request. But also, we're not a public stock, we talk to Mr. Liz and there's some options, so. Again, so.
Okay.
All right.
That's great, that's a very sure.
Okay, do we have anything else, commissioners, that we need to? I see a decision, do we want to set a date certain or do we need to allow, be flexible so that whenever we, you do get that notice, you know, we'll reach out. And of course, Melanie will reach out and say, you know, this is the date that we're looking at. Can everybody be available? And if you're not able to come down, please note that we understand that. But that distance, we can always resume, but, you know, never works fast.
Sure. I don't think you would need to be here for that.
Well, that's what I said, you know, that's it.
Contracts are kind of standard, a little fairer. So how long does it usually take to negotiate a contract?
Depends, mine took two weeks, but that was just, I think, a lack of time. Our last one, I think, with Charles, was about two weeks. I don't know, Jim, do you have any recommendations for the time period? A lot of it's going to depend on Dawn, on the schedule.
Yeah, there's some variables in the contract, it's mostly benefit issues. Is he going to get a city car or a car allowance? Are you going to put money into a 401 versus a pension plan? You know, how many days vacation is he going to get for you? That kind of stuff, it shouldn't take a lot of time. But that's normally, and all that language is in draft contracts. So it's easy to strike through, fill in the number, and just get on with it. So hopefully, that contract will make it much quicker for you to...
That's right, and you'll provide that, and you'll provide that to Melanie. She can provide it to Dawn.
Yeah, we might already have it, the city manager search guide.
We might have.
It's online, it's in the League of Cities, and I know that document very well.
Okay. And then probably our final, our final thing is in making these phone calls to our other applicants. Do, I feel unfairness to them, we do need to reach out to them and let them know. Do you want me to have that pleasurable job? Or do you want to, she was gone for the day?
Probably was left to break out.
So she's gone typically, we do it right after. Or we could have Jim and George.
No, they can do it.
No, they can do it. We're not employees, we can't wrap it up.
I, I, I see you can.
Come on.
Christine, if you're more comfortable with Christine, so that's up to you.
I mean, I, I think, I, I think that you know how to do this, and I think it would be perfectly appropriate for you to make the calls. I'm sorry, you're watching the media.
That's, that's our job, that, that's, that's why.
But I know you will convey our appreciation and tell them that it was a, in many ways, a difficult decision.
I don't think they enjoyed getting to see Preston's family.
Do you want the, do you want to do that by motion, so that there's no question by any commissioners later on?
Sure, I move that we designate Mayor Myers to make the phone calls today to the three candidates who were not selected and let, letting them know.
Second?
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Melanie, do a roll call for me, please. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner DeVito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
So, that's it, so this is it. So, that's it.
You finished all of seven names, yeah.
Yeah, that's, 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 no, it's fine, it is fine, it, it, it really is. That was better than the, the last time, that was, that was tougher than the last time. With that, everyone, I thank you so much. Our staff, you did a great job. Thank you, everybody. Me, Christina, Jilla, Melanie, Karen. This was Karen's last meeting, has she left, or is she still watching from next door?
Next door.
Next door. Karen, we wish you much success. You will be missed, you will be missed. Melanie, thank you for stepping in, and like I said, you got thrown into the fire and you've done so, the next job so far. Jim, George, thank you for your guidance, thank you for getting us through. This is a tough, this was a tough process, but you brought us from a very, very strong, awesome candidate. There's Karen. Woo, everybody, woo! Audience, thank you, thank you for your participation and for being here. Again, there's still food left, if anybody wants food, if you want to take some. And, and, and lastly, I want to thank Mr. Flowers and Ashley again for your willingness to make Crescent City part of your life. I find that you'll, there's some wonderful people here, it's a boring community, and we welcome you again with open arms. And with that, I'll take a motion for the chairman.
I'd like to read your...
What, what do you have?
I'm, I have a couple of questions.
Well, we'll have a discussion, motion for a chairman, second in the discussion.
Well, this is a whole separate topic. Our clerk mentioned that she is no longer the administrator of our Facebook page.
She is, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm just waiting.
That's because I was... I'm just talking, I'm just waiting. So, before we adjourn, do we need any clarification on what is going to happen in, in the near future with our Facebook page? Because Karen said...
Charles was the...
Christina's the administrator, she's the administrator of our Facebook page.
Okay, so, so it's not out of commission?
No, no, oh, no.
Okay, because all the clerk said, the outgoing clerk said was that she's not the administrator. She did not say there is one.
No, Christina is, and Melanie will also be, and Michael is also, I believe Michael is, is, I think he has that.
Yeah, hang on to that.
Okay, and I, I know he has posted stuff before during the storm, he gets that, so we're covered.
Okay, fine, I second that.
Okay, so we have all in favor, please say aye for our... It'll be a thank you all here tonight.